Roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsin.
Here.
Commissioner Ollie.
Here. George, you gonna get you to pray for us?
Yes.
Please bow your heads.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and we ask continued prayers, Father, for the safety of our men and women over or military men and women overseas and at home, also our first responders, Father, and also continued prayers for the safety and and the well-being of all of our ag people in the county that are busy planting crops for hopefully another great season. May I ask, Father, you be with us tonight through our deliberations that we do things pleasing unto you. For it is in the name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join us for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Probably a good time to introduce our interim administrator, Brian Wood.
Hello.
Welcome. Brief public comment. Oh, wait a second. We want to have the airport meeting right after the audit. Now we go to public comment.
You gotta have a motion to the agenda. So I say move that we accept the agenda.
Or, or moved by George, supported by Tim to support the agenda, approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Sheila.
Is it okay for the comments now? Um, you have a set of questions and answers to go through tonight regarding the battery storage.
We have three minutes.
Okay. Rewind, um, that I would like to address. First, the claim that that battery storage structures have don't affect property values. I think that's wrong. Um, nobody would want to live near that, um, considering the risk of fire, explosion, and toxic contamination of soil, water, and air. Common sense tells us that these, these will negatively impact the quality of life. Let's also talk about where the money comes from. These projects are not funded by private innovation. They are heavily subsidized by our tax dollars. I would like to stress the importance of containment and environmental protections with the which the current ordinance may overlook or address only in part. Battery energy storage systems like fuel tanks and other hazardous material storage pose serious risks of fire, explosion, and environmental contamination. Other industries are required to implement strict containment measures to protect public health, groundwater, and soil. Those same standards must be applied here as well. Dairy farms with lagoons have to line their lagoons with bentonite clay. So some containment protocols to consider. Um, a containment pad that holds a large amount of fluid and includes drainage to a sealed vault. Shut-off valves should be installed and monitored to prevent discharge from leaving the site. Developers should install a clay liner or other membrane. We should require earth and berms and vegetated swales to contain runoff during fires, filter toxins, and shield neighbors and wildlife. There should be routine environmental testing. For buffers, buffers and visual protection, it should be required to have three rows of staggered vegetative screening, combining evergreen and deciduous trees for year-round cover. All battery storage systems should be a minimum 500 feet from any pond, stream, lake, swamp, or drain. In regards to cybersecurity, national security concerns, recent reports in Reuters and The Times have confirmed that some Chinese-manufactured solar inverters and batteries hidden communication devices, undocumented modules that could allow remote access or disruption. This raises serious cybersecurity concerns that must be addressed in any ordinance. We cannot, we cannot ignore this risk, especially when the national security experts are sounding the alarms. Additionally, one important note I did not hear mentioned previously. Um, battery storage projects should be loco- located within the solar installations, integrated within the same footprint. Battery storage units should not be permitted as standalone projects scattered across the county, keeping them embedded within the solar fields allows for more consistent containment oversight and land use planning. Um, consider finding components of the battery storage systems. We heard about the components. Um, and please don't rush this ordinance. Thank you.
Next. Okay, no other public comment. Consideration of the consent calendar.
Move.
Moved by George, supported by Tim to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those nay. Administrators report.
Well, thank you. Um. It's been a busy few days since I've arrived. Um. I just wanted to make a few quick comments. I started on the seventeenth, had a cordial welcome from the staff on Friday, the seventh, had a meeting with the department heads, elected officials. Did an introduction. We did a little roundtable, just kind of talked about, uh, the morale and such and how we need to all be rowing in the same direction. So that again, I was very cordial and I think well received and felt good about that and thank you to all of them. Um. I would note that I did receive a status report on a, it's privileged and confidential regarding a 2017 suit in federal court involving a property tax sale. Uh, if any of the board members would like to see it, it is available in my office. Frankly, it's not all that exciting a reading, but it's probably going to continue on for a good while, but, uh, just to mention that. I attended the meetings at the, uh, with the emergency management group, uh, for the county courthouse security team. The airport authority advisory board. Uh, did a jail tour with the sheriff and some, uh, professionals from Spicer, looking at some of the needed building enhancements over there. Some potential modest additions. Uh, they'll be putting together a proposal to come back to the board to review prior to proceeding with anything, but, uh, I think that's a good first step in that regard. And I think that would conclude, uh, kind of the activities for myself and anything noteworthy in the last few days. And thank you.
Thank you. Steve, you want to start out?
Um. Last Friday, attended the conservation district meeting that I'm newly appointed to. Um. They are still in need of two more members. Um. They've talked to a few different people, but they don't have anybody beating down the door to become a, one of the five board members for the conservation district. So everything hinges on if all three of them can be there. If they can't, they don't have a quorum and that has happened, um, to them multiple times due to somebody not being able to be there. Um. Last night I attended the Northshade Township meeting. Um, Northshade was a quick meeting, didn't have a lot to go, go through, but they are, um, working on, or they actually approved or adopted an ordinance to, um, rent their, um, township hall. Uh. It's got, I don't think they'll have a ton of people beating down the door to rent it, and that's probably a, a good thing because it's a very nice facility and they don't want to get all messed up. So, um, there's, if you're going to use it, you're going to use the five small tables they have there and the chairs they have. That's it. So, um, I don't think they'll have a lot of trouble with people but, uh, wanting to be in there, but that's okay. And then Fulton Township moved their meeting up, um, should be next week, but that being the holiday, they moved it up. Um, they're appreciative of, um, us working with them to get the verbiage right on the, um, the sewer property. Um. They also, um, had some questions, uh, and I sent an email to, believe Deandra Prosecutor and, uh, Bill Leonard today on language with the, um, blight ordinance and the blight, uh, ordinance that they have within their township and verbiage and, and what have you. They want to, um, in fact, uh, blight was brought up at both township meetings I was at, um, last night. So definitely something that they are all concerned about as we move into spring and everybody's out and about more and realizing places that need to be addressed. Um, other than that, that's kind of what.
I have a question for you.
Sorry.
How many times do the conservation district meet in a year?
Uh, twelve. They meet monthly.
Monthly? Okay. There's so many people here that are looking for someone on the board of the conservation district. If you'd like to be on it, it's very knowledgeable. We know a lot about nature and land and the water and everything. So if there's anybody here, please let Steve know. And they've been looking for someone, two people?
Yeah, they have two, two vacancies and they've been looking for a long time. So.
Yeah, we have a commissioner on the board, but we need to someone at large. So. Okay, I, I attended a MMR meeting last week. We are losing, uh, Mike McCloskey, who's been on the board for 30 years. Um, he is retiring. Uh, he wants to spend his golden years doing other things. Um, so, um, we're looking for someone at large on that board. Also, we're looking for some others. Um, I just talked to the sheriff and he's agreed. He is going to sit in or sit, come to the meetings for the police department. We're looking for someone for the police department or represents the the police or sheriff's office. And then someone for the fire department. I think there was another, someone else was going to look for that or do some, uh, searching for that. And then we need someone at large on there too. Um, I'm also, um, and I have paperwork and I'm sorry, I forgot to bring that to you, Angie, and I'll bring it to you so you can get it on the next meeting. And then I attended a St. Louis meeting. Um. That was fun and interesting. I took on the literature and dropped it off and, um, it's so that you pass it out to the, the board members. And I also attended a meeting at Bethany Township. And I'll, yeah, I guess that's it for, since the last meeting.
George.
Oh my, I did all sorts of things. Um. One of the things that, uh, went to Hamilton Township and they're coming right along and all I saw was chairs and boxes and stuff all over the place, but that's, I'm sure it's all put together by now. Right down? Okay. No, it's looking really great. Uh, they're going to have a, uh, like a little open, open house welcoming on the ninth. Yeah. From two to seven or some, or not, to five to six.
Five to six.
I'll get it. Five to seven?
Yep.
Five to seven. Okay. Just want to make sure I got that plug in there. Uh, also attended North Star meeting. Um. Business as usual there. Uh, they're still, they're talking about blight problems. So this blight is a big thing. Um, also, uh, let's see. Uh, what date was it? Oh, I was supposed to be at a Breckenridge meeting at seven o'clock. So hurry, hurry along tonight. I'll get over there. That's, they changed it because of the Memorial Day. Uh, so they usually have it on the fourth Monday. Memorial Day this year, and they had a conflict with last month or this previous Monday night, so they put it on the, tonight. So. Um, I'll be there with, in spirit, I guess. And that's it for me.
Tim, what do you got?
Uh, on May eighth, I went to the mental health, uh, meeting. Uh, they're cutting back, they're laying off four staff members. That got my attention. Uh, Michelle Stillwagen has been talking about, you know, building a new building and leveling the Wright Avenue school, but the Wright Avenue School has been, uh, doned a, a historic site, so they can't level that. So they've got land on Warwick Drive to build a, a new building. I'm happy that they're keeping the Wright Avenue school. I didn't say so at the time. I didn't want to be argumentative. Unless I have to be. Uh, Emerson Township on May 12th, um. They talked about, uh, this is interesting. Uh, the Emerson Township Hall, uh, had the Alma, uh, bond renewal. And I voted there and my wife voted there and that just one other person voted there the whole day. And there's four absentees. So, uh, we voted for the bond renewal five to two. Um. Uh, the man who takes care of the cemeteries talked, talked about power washing the building and painting inside. Uh. And, uh, Dave was at the meeting, uh, after he sheared sheep. So, and so that was, that was a nice surprise. Okay, uh, and then May 14th, Arcata. Um. Hey, there, the voting was different. It, it was, uh, for the bond, uh, renewal for Alma, uh, schools, it was a hundred seven to a hundred seven. But, uh, it was renewed though overall. So, um. They talked about two bills. Uh, it's kind of curious, Wi-Fi and consumer energy. Uh, you know, they get the okay to pay bills when they meet. But when they wait, the, the, those bills are late sending them by mail. So they want to send them online or, or something. So they won't, won't play. Uh, they could pay, uh, the Wi-Fi like a year in advance, but the consumer energy varies from month to month. So they can't do that. Uh. Okay, uh. Uh, Dave Ringo was there from the plane, uh, commission. He was on the board, but then a new guy, William Baxter was, was there that takes Dave's place. So. That's it.
Okay. Well, I went to Greater Grashit. Um. It's always an interesting meeting. You have people from all different walks and they tell about what's going on in their individual place and that was a 500-year storm up in Gaylord and they said it'll take 30 to 40 years before they get back to normal. I was at the Alma City Commission. I don't know if I'm going back. Come to public comment. And I got up and he says, you got five minutes. I said, well, if I take five minutes, just shoot me. And one of the members said, can I? And the mayor said, the line starts at the left, so. Not going back.
They were shooting. Like eighty-six, forty-seven, right?
Okay, new business. Keegan.
Hopefully make this, uh, short and sweet. Um. I've got the 2025 tax rate request form, uh, ready for approval by the board. Um, by approving this form, the board is certifying the county operating millage of 5.5206 for levy on the summer tax bills. Uh, this form also certifies that the appropriate millage reduction fraction of one has been applied. So, um, no reduction at all with the, uh, operating millage would be the same as last year.
Overall is what?
Uh, 5.5206.
Do you hear a motion to approve that? Or moved by George, supported by Steve to
That's higher than before.
Uh, the same as it was.
Same as well.
Yeah, exact same as it was, uh, last year.
Haven't moved it in years.
Yeah. Yep, but, uh, a few years ago, I believe it was reduced a little bit by a fraction, but, um, I'm not exactly sure what that fraction was, but yeah, same as last year.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those nay. Thank you, Keegan.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
You're shit. We got a deputy Alex Tannis here.
You. Hi, so thanks for having me. Um, so the sheriff's department's interested in looking into getting another tool um, for Arsenal. Last month we talked about the body cameras and we're trying to lay stuff out to you guys as how we use it. So, um, we were fortunate enough, um, to be able to use one of these that I had personally got for Christmas last year on Easter Sunday this year, and it helped save a life. Um. So we're going to go through all that and, um, kind of explain that whole, how it played out. And I think that we have some people here that are going to talk and Tom's going to talk. Um, but as we get it going, I kind of wanted to explain it. So the LifeVax system is a, a unique system. It came out a couple of years ago and since then it's saved over 5,000 lives. Um, with, with that, um, how it works is basically it's just like a plunger for a toilet, but you put it on people's faces and it sucks choking, uh, objects out of their mouth. So, uh, the one that I have for you guys here is a complete kit. Comes with a, um, training tool as well as the kits. Um, currently we have five AED bags that circle it on the park as we go out on patrol for all of our cars in the county. Um, this would just clip on and be able to help us in the case of a choking child, adult, or anything in between. Um, so I'll pass it around. It's all clean. Everything's brand new, so you don't have to worry about cooties, but, um, if you want to pass it around, go through it. Um.
The great thing about this is once you use this device, they will send you a brand new one back. So it's a one-time purchase. Um, comes with three different size masks for infant, smaller child, and adult. Very simple to operate. It, uh, it's basically just a small plunger. It fits over the mouth, the nose, and, um, it, it works. Not everybody can, you, you can't do a Heimlich on everybody, you know, some of them are size or whatever. So this device right here is just another tool. Um. They had, uh, two deputies, officers working, working on this, still couldn't dislodge it. Thankfully without, um, he was able to get that, uh, but they worked on this gentleman for over 10 minutes. So didn't have air, breathing for over 10 minutes. Without this device, um, unfortunately it would have been a totally different outcome.
And you can reuse this over and over, right?
They send you new masks. Every time you do, you just have to call them and the company will send you an entire new kit.
Yep.
Um.
How fast did you get yours after you called them?
Within three days. They overnight it. Um, but yeah, I mean, in this particular incident, they were working on them for about 10 minutes and within two minutes of me being on scene, we were talking with the gentleman um, and having a, a conversation about the different grape beer options that they have at, though.
Can you buy extra masks?
Yeah, so you have them. Uh, you can get extra ones. They have trainer ones. Um. Uh. You can pretty much customize your kits as you need fit.
So how many are you asking for?
I'm asking for twenty. This way each, each car will have one, each deputy's car will have one. Myself and the sheriff will have one. We'll have one at our office, in the back at the jail, and then also three of them here for where the AEDs are here in the courthouse as well.
How much are they?
Sixty dollars.
How much?
Sixty dollars apiece.
We got it here. Oh, yeah, no way.
Yes.
Eleven hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty cents.
And with that too, as our first aid and CPR instructor here at the county, I'd be more than willing to work with any of the county employees, any of the departments, anything like that, that would be interested in having these tools or learning how to use these tools. Like I said, they're pretty self-explanatory. They come with instructions. Um, but they're, I, I said, be more than willing to sit down with anybody that wants to learn it or any of the department.
Can somebody from, like, local people, can they buy one?
Absolutely. You can buy them. You can buy them online. Um. Uh, the reason for us is because we, uh, use this. The company sent us a 20% off coupon, um, for our one-time purchase. So I know the Alma PD is going to be buying some Breckenridge, uh, St. Louis. Um, and probably the hospital, I would assume. So.
I'd never even heard of them, not until I asked. They told me about it and thankfully they got one for Christmas. You know, and he carries in his go-bag, you know, so he just had him throw it when he's coming in the day and had his go-bag that he carries around every day with him at work and you know.
Does look like a plunger when you look.
It is. Yeah. And like I said, you guys are more than welcome. Take it out, play with it. See how it works and afterwards I can leave it around if you guys want to take time.
All right. All right. Motion that we roll ahead, it would be our purchase hour. Per twenty.
For twenty of them, yes.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to buy 20 LifeVax for the sheriff's department. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those nay. Motion carried.
Good. Good job.
From one guy with not much hair to another guy without much hair.
Uh, Josh, you want to come up and, and Marty, if you want to come up as well? So the particular gentleman that we're, that we're talking about today is, uh, is Josh. Josh was out, uh, Easter with the Spainway, um, and Alma Brewing Company, having a, having a good dinner, having a good lunch, celebrating uh, Easter and, uh, unfortunately started, uh, started choking. Had a medical condition that, uh, caused to start choking and, uh, sent to dispatch, uh, had received a phone call. And, um, so the young lady that picked up the phone is here as well. And, um, so we're going to be celebrating her here in a second as well, but, uh, picked up the phone. Naomi realized what was going on, got the right calls going and, uh, dispatched Alma officers and since we have such a good working relationship with all of the partners in Grashit County, um, Deputy Bradley, Deputy, uh, Tannis decided to assist. You know, they were in the kind of the general area. Heard that there was a, a patient that was, uh, I believe started CPR and was trying to dislodge the stuffed food because he'd stopped breathing and, uh, was already blue and unconscious on the floor. Um, started CPR, ran on him, realized he's choking, started doing the Heimlich maneuver on him. Couldn't get that, uh, food dislodged. And so Naomi's talking with him, trying to get him going through dispatch to MMR. Meanwhile, the other partners are on the other line listening and everything else. And they're dispatching the Alma officers, dispatching us. And, uh, you know, so without a whole team effort, it could have been a totally different outcome. You know, and, uh, it, uh, so it, it gives me great pleasure. We, we just celebrated, uh, National Police Week last week, just fantastic. Um. It was also, we'll tele, or sent the dispatch workers week a few weeks ago as well. So I thought that this was probably a fitting time to, to give all some lifesaving awards. Um, without their quick action, we're thanking, it, it would have turned out totally different, I believe. Um. You know, it, uh, there's not an ambulance in every corner. And thankfully there was officers in every corner. There was deputies that was right around the corner as well. And with all of them working on, on Josh, they were bringing back and, uh, and he's here today to, uh, to be here. Um. You know, and, and it's not every day too that you get to to meet the person, you know, and see how they are a few weeks or a month after, you know, they've come out of this traumatic event. Um, when, when I received my lifesaving award, um, I've never seen the guy again, you know, so I don't know what he's doing today. I don't know what he's doing or anything like that. It was over in St. Louis. And, uh, you know, and so it's, it's kind of those things that you, you would love to see, you know, how he's doing today and, and, you know, how he's feeling and that type of stuff, but I've never seen the guy again since that day and I probably wouldn't know who he was, you know, and, uh, but it's, it's a great honor and it's a great when we're able to, to get these awards and, uh, you know, it just, it just, it's a little attaboy. It's a, it's a pat on the back, you know, when you, when you do something good and something turns out right. Not every time it does, but when it does, it's, it is a great feeling and it makes you realize why we put on badges and why everyone worked every day, you know, it's for days like this. So with that, um, like give us some words. And Josh, do you have anything that?
You know, I got a lot of times Jesus turned me to save my life. It sounded surreal. I just wish, thank you. Carry as much weight as that.
I hear you.
Now this happened at the Alma Brewing Company?
Yes, it did.
And there just happened to be a few deputies around?
Don't go there, Dave.
So it, it is. It's, it's a, it's a great, it's a great. Actually, some, some of the, uh, some people couldn't be here today. They had a fire, they had a fire or a heat mess. And, um, the, uh, the lifesaving pins that we have, they're on order. Unfortunately, they're not here yet. And so, uh, must be the, the terrorists in China holding them up or something. But, uh, you know, but, uh, each one will also get a, a lifesaving pin to, to wear, put in their in their box at the end of retirement or however they want to cherish them, you know, and that. But first one I'm going to call up is Naomi Hewitt. Naomi Hewitt is a dispatcher. She has only been on the job for just a short, short, short time, what, six months?
I did this as a trainee. I just got off training three weeks ago.
Yeah, so this is right here. So she's, she's brand, brand new. I listened to the 911, um, tape as well. She kept a very, very, very level head and, and just kept on talking to the young lady that was, was a worker at Alma Brewing Company, I believe was on the other line. And so Naomi was telling her what And so Naomi was starting, we're telling her what to do, relay the message back to the people that were trying to work on Josh. Patching them through to MMR to get that rig coming as well, so they could keep going. So, you know, for just a young, young dispatcher, she kept a loving head and, and was able to get the guys there and quickly there. And helps save Josh's life. So I would like to give that to Josh and you can hand it to Naomi.
Thank you very much.
The other two people that were dispatched, unfortunately, they couldn't make it today. One has some family, family's dealing and, and, um, not sure, but these two guys, right, Justin, Justin Piggott. He's got probably close to twenty years in dispatch account. He's an old timer, you know, but he, you know, listening to him there on, on dispatch tapes and that. Did a great job, level head, calm. He's, he's a, I've never seen Justin ever get excited or get riled up. He just is an even keel type of guy. He's monotone right through her and and I don't know if anything rattles Justin anymore, you know, but he's one of those guys that you could rely on him all the time. The other one here, Dylan Weaver, he's not very old either. I think he's only got maybe six months, so you're in. He came from, he came from MMR, so. Yeah, the other side, you know, as well, so Dylan, which is, Dylan came, he was really here in town, so he's not that far away either. But Dylan's, Dylan's his bull group as well. He's seen it, he's heard it all. And so it, it's great. So I want to see these guys, these guys there at school as well. The next gentleman here, Ben Jerkovich. Ben is an Alma officer. So like I said, we, we wanted to, to give these lifesaving awards as well to recognize Elma as well. Yes, awesome. These guys were the first ones on scene, Logan Bustle and Ben Jerkovich. And, you know, they were in there and then, you know, they were, they were working. So this young gentleman right here, he doesn't look like it, but he's got twelve years in already. I, I thought he only had a couple.
He's got twelve days in.
Yeah, he's, he's got four years. He's got four years up at Claire and a little bit over four years at Claire and he's got seven years in Alma already. The guy doesn't look like he's going to deal over twenty-one, you know. I don't, I don't understand why he looks so youngster. You know, it, not only my share of our deputies, but you know, I feel like i- if I see somebody else that does a good job and deserves an award, you know, I feel as it's, it's right, we should do it to give Ben, because listen to the tapes and these guys were trying, I mean, they, they had two guys working on him at the same time, trying to give him a Heimlich together and they're both tag teaming on him. They just couldn't get it dislodged. So they worked on it for ten minutes. So if you guys can imagine banging and beating on somebody for ten minutes, just sitting there trying to do either CPR or Heimlich for ten solid minutes. You know, these guys, they had to been smoked, you know, they had to been just smoked, but they kept it up, kept it up and they got it going. And so they went down to the bowling field. Next one I'd like to give out is to Logan Bustle. Logan Bustle is also another Alma officer. Logan started out his career as a sheriff's deputy. And then he decided to, decided to go up to Alma. Logan's right now in some training over at Delta College and so unfortunately he couldn't be here. But Logan's probably got solid ten years in, I would say, you know, and so he's been around the block as well. And he's a great cat. He's a great guy. He's always one of those ones that I love. If he hears a call come out, he's right there. And, you know, he's, he's a good egg. He's, he's a, he's a solid egg. And, you know, but I wish he could be here. His wife was going to try to be here, but she's got, they got some sick kids at home. So you give us when we, when we see you next time. But let's get, Tyler Bradley. So Tyler, Tyler has been with us for, it's all six months or so now. And maybe a little bit over six, about seven months. And Tyler was one of the unfortunate ones from Isabella County. So, you know, Isabella unfortunately is not, does not have a religious role anymore. So Tyler had ten, ten years up there, had ten years up there. And unfortunately, they, they let him go down that village. And so the whole department's gone. But thankfully, he came down here and applied and I was, I was one of the ones, I wasn't sheriff yet, I was sheriff elect. But was able to sit down and interview with him and I could truly see some real potential in this young man. And so I'm glad Sheriff Morris was able to, was able to make that work and hire him. But, you know, Tyler's been great down here in Grashit County. He fits really good with everybody and the thing about our guys right here is this wasn't even our call. You know, this was an Alma call. But they heard the call come out, they heard the dispatch come out. And, you know, when you got a guy down, he's not breathing and turned a blue already. CPR is a progress. It is one of those things where it doesn't matter if it's an Alma call or a St. Louis call. These guys, and I've told them this from day one, I don't care where it's at. If it's Alma, if it's a St. Louis, it was Breckenridge or whatever. If you're there, you help, you know. And there, there's not going to be any chance guys in Ford or why'd you do that or whatever. It's a team effort, you know, here in Grashit County. And chances are, we're only having forty-three thousand residents. You're going to know, you know, you're going to know who they are, family member or whatever. But Tyler is, has been a great, great guy and it, it gives me great pleasure to, to give this to you. All right. Alex Tins. So Alex, Alex is kind of like our, our rule two guy. He, he's our rule two guy. Anytime I need something done, Alex, I don't even have to ask him. I'll do a sheriff, I'll do a sheriff, I'll do a sheriff. And, and, you know, I have a little nose, it's done, but that's, that's the type of guy right there that Alex says. He is the guy that I don't even have to ask him. He's already got it done. And, you know, there's, there's a bunch of little medial tasks and he will just step up and do it. And Alex was from Greenville, was over Greenville PD, had three years in, four years in Greenville PD. And then now he's been over here for almost three years, two and a half, three years. And so Alex is our, our best expert on the department. He is the one that does all of our CPR training and everything else. And so it, it, it's no surprise that he had one of those days go back, you know, it really, it really doesn't. He, he is constantly talking to the guys, you know, and training with them and you know, and it might even be just in a joking around manner. But he's still training him, talking with them and everything else, just getting that repetitiveness. That way, if you do roll up on scene somewhere, it is, you know, second nature. You've already got, you, you might not think you have those skills, but those skills are already there in the back of your head to start performing. Over Moncom County, he's on EMS, EMS and fire. And so I, I watched the roll up on fire scenes before and that, and he just takes charge over the guys. He's pointing them in all the different directions. He's telling them where to park, where to drag hoses to and everything else, especially where to actually fire here the other day. You know, with that big salvage yard. He was, I just sat back in awe and just watched him. He, he was just like a conductor over there in an orchestra, just making all the parts move and fall. And so, you know, it, it makes me very proud when I get to see that and watch these guys do stuff like that and watch them be totally these and their elements. So it, it, it just didn't surprise me at all when, when Alex responded to this call. He, he wasn't right there on scene right away when it came after a few minutes, you know, but he already knew what to do. He probably already ran this scenario in the back of his head a thousand times, you know, what do I do in a choking situation or whatever. And thankfully he had those little devices right there. And, you know, was able to, able to get that food dislodged. And, you know, like I said, Josh was down for a solid ten minutes. You know, you, you listen to the tapes and you look at the time that came in. And probably, to be honest, he was probably even down longer than that, but at the time, he knew something was wrong with him. He was already on the floor. So, I mean, it could have been another minute or two before that. So potentially he had twelve solid minutes, you know, so. And if you ever tried to hold your breath, I know everybody's tried to do it as a kid. You try to time themselves to see how long you can do it. You're not going to do it very long, you know, but I'm very, very honored and pleased to, to give this to Alex. Thank you. Thank you guys very much. I really, really appreciate it.
I will go from lifesaving awards to the audit. Ally?
This ought to be just as exciting, right?
So, here we go.
Yeah. One Tim's been waiting.
Well, that's a hard presentation to follow. I'd rather be giving the lifesaving awards.
Me too. This was on.
Well, we will get through the audit results. Then the numbers and internal controls that I'm going to be talking about relate to your fiscal year that ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Just to put that into contact text for you, so we all know where we're at. So the first thing I want to talk about is the audit opinion. So the whole point of engaging with a CPA firm to come in and look at your financial statements is to issue you an opinion on those statements. And so that is what we design our procedures to do. It is ultimately management's responsibility to be putting all of the information and the numbers together to provide to us. And then our responsibility is to look at that information based on risk assessment that we perform and provide you with an opinion. And so the county has received an unmodified or clean audit opinion. I do want to point out here so that it's, it's not confusing later, that we can issue an unmodified opinion even though perhaps we identify internal control issues. So we're going to talk about some internal control issues later. That is separate kind of findings than what the actual audit opinion itself is. So just want to point that out for you. Okay, we're going to start here with general fund and just talk at a very high level. You throughout the course of the year are already looking down more in the details at some of these numbers. So we're going to keep it, keep it very high level for you. So here we have the last four years of general funds revenue. You can see there is relative consistency here. Twenty twenty-two revenues were down a little more than the other three years presented. But as a whole, your revenues have stayed pretty consistent year over year. We're also going to see that consistency when we look at general fund expenditures as well. A couple of things to point out here. So you'll see in twenty twenty-four, we have kind of a new category of expenses labeled as judicial expenditures. You have always had those in the past, but this year the county went through the chart of accounts conversion. And so we have all of the proper departments set up and mapped per the requirements of the state of Michigan. And so those are now broken out separately within your report. And so I, I broke them out here separately for you as well. So you kind of have to think about the two blue shades together when you're looking at, at the previous years as well. So the current year had about fourteen point six million in expenditures. See that that went down from the previous year. In years past, when I've been up here, I've kind of gone through a list of other funds that get rolled up into the general fund for your audit reporting. And this year, when we looked at the evaluation of some of those funds, it was time to split them back out. So there were a handful of funds, public improvement, secondary road patrol, childcare, juvenile, and the animal adoption coordinator, coordinator funds that were split out this year and they're reported separately. So that's going to account for that decrease, the seemingly decrease in expenditures this year. Here you can see your general funds fund balance, which is looking in good shape. In the previous year, you were at about ten point seven million. This year, you're at about twelve point six million. So that increased for fiscal year twenty twenty-four by about one point nine million, so a pretty healthy increase. You can see in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, there is some more red shading there. There were amounts of your fund balance that were assigned for certain purposes. The details of those can be found within the audit report. The two most significant were future building projects, about one point five million. And then a million for OPEB, so your, your retiree-related healthcare expenditures. Those assignments can always be removed, should you choose to do so, and use those dollars for other purposes. So make you aware of that, just because it's assigned once doesn't mean it has to stay assigned. Switching gears, we'll touch on the delinquent tax revolving fund. So this is the county's other major fund, as we call it. A lot of activity goes through here related to property tax transactions. And so the top line there gives you the total net position within that fund. So that's going to be if we took all the assets in that fund and subtracted out all the liabilities. Net position is basically what's left over. So net position for the year was about eight point nine million. That was up roughly a million from the previous fiscal year. And then within the balance sheet of that fund, the amount held in cash and investments is going to be the most significant asset. So we provide that number for you. You will see that the actual cash and investments decreased even though your net position increased, which would seem to not necessarily make sense. The reason that that happened is that in the twenty twenty-three fiscal year, there was an amount sitting in cash of over eight hundred thousand that needed to get paid to the general fund. And it just didn't get paid until your new fiscal year. So it's a little bit of a timing issue there when you're looking at this graph and, and why the bottom line didn't increase as well. So overall, though, in that fund, a very healthy amount of cash and investments on hand, which allows your treasurer to be able to purchase those receivables at tax settlement time without having to issue any type of debt to do so. Looking at your longer term obligations, county really has, has done a fine job managing the long-term obligations that are outstanding. And there's a relatively small amount in bonds, about one point seven million at the end of the year. And within the bonds, there's really only a couple of years worth of payments left to make. The most significant bond that was outstanding relates back to when you issued the debt to buy down the net pension liability, to help kind of normalize those pension payments. So that's outstanding. Compensated absences are less than a million dollars. That number may change with your next audit. There are some new rules that will be in effect. And so it could potentially gross up that liability. But that shouldn't really change your year-to-year paying out those leave time balances. There was a very small amount left in leases and installment contracts. And then really your most significant long-term liability is still that net pension liability. That came in at just over six point one million. Um, you will see that that did decrease from the previous year. I'm, I'm going to guess that when you got your valuation for twelve thirty-one twenty-four, that probably decreased again, but I have not seen it. Um, the market was much better at the end of twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-three. So that would be my expectation that that's come down again. And then you only have about twenty-three thousand left on the OPEB liability. So you actually have more set aside in your general fund fund balance for that OPEB obligation than you have actual OPEB obligation outstanding. So it's probably something to think about if you really need that assignment there um, or not. I would argue you probably don't need that and you could assign those dollars for other purposes. Perhaps um, buying down more of the net pension liability, or you can come up with other uses for those dollars. So as part of the audit, um, because of the level of federal money that the county receives, we have to do an additional audit called the single audit, where we look specifically at federal awards and the dollars that are spent under those awards. So the county had about three point three million in total federal dollars. And of that, about two point three million came through as ARPA funding and was spent during this particular fiscal year. So we audited, audited that particular fund. And within that particular program, we did not have any federal award findings. So those, those funds looked good. Um, if you're not all the way through them, you're, you're, you were getting close at the end of the fiscal year. Everyone's kind of wrapping up spending these dollars, so.
Less than a hundred thousand in miscellaneous.
Yeah, yeah. It seems like there's just a little bit that's trickling through for everybody that you just can't quite get off your books. Yes, but you'll get there. All right, now we're gonna talk about internal control deficiencies. So we focused on the numbers. That's the majority of what we're doing in the audit. But we also have to consider the controls that are in place to create the financial information that's being provided to us that we're reporting on. And so this year, we did have a material audit adjustment. Um, there was one in particular related to a new fin- financing arrangement um, that caused a three point three million dollar adjustment. Fortunately, this is an adjustment that grossed up revenue and grossed up expenditures. So it was a net zero effect to your equity, um, which is a positive. It's much better than us coming in and doing some type of an adjustment for that dollar amount that affects your fund balance or your net position. Um, but it was material. It was mostly related to timing. Um, when the, when the budget was done, it was the expectation that that contract wasn't going to be entered into until October, but it actually ended up being entered into in September. Um, and so because it was entered into in September, it needed to be recorded then as well. Along with this finding, we also did have more than thirty other adjustments that we proposed as a part of the, the audit procedures that we perform. And this really is indicative of there not being enough or the right types of controls in place for the county system to find these year-end adjustments on its own. Um, so this, this particular area, and this has been an issue now for quite a few years, um, is having these either material audit adjustments or many audit adjustments um, within your year-end financial statements. So I think this is a really solid area that you really should focus on, on finding solutions to make sure that, that this doesn't happen. Because what it tells me is that you're getting financial information throughout the year. And if I were sitting in, in your seats, I would be concerned about the accuracy and, and the valuation of the numbers that are coming before me. If this many adjustments and material adjustments are happening at year end, what isn't right during the year that you're relying on to make decisions with? So definitely something to spend some time and perhaps some resources shoring that up. We have a couple more material weaknesses. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip to the bottom one and then I'm gonna come back to the misappropriation. So there was um, what we consider material non-compliance because your audit could not be filed timely this year. We were very close to finishing up the audit and we're having one more discussion about um, some transactions related to the airport, when there was an indication made by someone that they thought there was potentially additional federal awards that had been spent related to the airport. And what gets a little bit tricky with some of these federal awards is that the money may not actually flow to your county. It may actually be spent at the state level, but you are technically the sub-recipient of that, which means those dollars have to make it onto your single audit and be considered. And based on the potential dollar amount um, of, of what someone was saying might be outstanding, we needed to hit the pause button and make sure that there was communication between the county and the Arrow Division of MDOT to make sure that your statements weren't missing something. And so that caused um, some delay in making sure that we could finalize a particular piece. So we're gonna go back up to misappropriation of assets. So within our audits, we every year come up with something to do that's unpredictable. Uh, your, your team here, um, finance teams, other places, get kind of used to the questions we ask and the procedures that we do. And so we always want to make sure that we're keeping people on their toes um, and doing some surprise procedures, things we haven't done in the past. And so this year, we were doing a, what we call a management override test to look for fictitious vendors. And within that testing, um, we had a sample that we narrow it down to of vendors that seem unusual to us based on working with many other government entities. And so we, we narrow it down to a list and then we do additional procedures. Um, we go out and Google. Sometimes we call, call the phone numbers um, associated with these places and just ask kind of generic questions to ascertain if, if they're legitimate or not. And we look at invoices that were paid to these vendors. And as a result of those procedures, we did find a vendor that um, was not an actual vendor. It was a vendor made up by a county employee. And there were invoices that were entered and paid to this particular vendor. Um, the invoices identified in this financial statement audit were just over twenty-three thousand dollars. So after that was um, discovered, then um, it was obviously, it made its way to you as a commission. Um, and I know, you know, in our recommendation, we encourage that you continue going down the route of investigating that. There is a forensic audit currently in place. I am not on the forensic audit team, so I'm not at liberty to discuss where they are at in their finding level there. Um, but this is what was discovered within this audit and can be taken to, to the next step. Within vendors, then, we, we highly recommend that the whole vendor process be taken a look at. The controls in place over adding new vendors, um, changing information about vendors, really being highly skeptical when payments are coming through and you don't recognize vendors, um, making sure you're asking questions. So really taking a holistic look at that entire process from an invoice coming in to being paid and approved here at this level, and making sure that there are minimal opportunities for someone to kind of circumvent those controls and do everything themselves um, and kind of go under the radar. So I'm gonna pause there if you have questions about that one.
So basically what you're saying is we need to have other steps in place internally, so this doesn't happen again.
Correct. This was a very needle in the haystack item that we found. Um, of the millions and millions of dollars flowing through the county, the fact that we even found, um, I think the initial invoice that came up in our testing was maybe twenty-three hundred dollars. So the likelihood of an external audit finding this is incredibly, incredibly small. Our audits are not designed to find fraud. We do sometimes find fraud, um, but we're, we're more looking at the, the end-of-the-year numbers, what's flowing through and internal controls. Um, so to identify this is not common, which is why your controls need to be really strong so that you can internally prevent um, and detect these things when they do happen.
And how do we go about doing that?
Ally, I'd like to say something too. When I first came on the board twenty-five years ago, the commissioners did the, um, they did the um, budget. And we no longer do the budget. Um, we don't have anything to do with the budget, in fact. We get it on a Thursday or a Friday and we okay it on a Tuesday. For a long time, I didn't okay it, because I felt that I didn't know really what was in that, in the budget. And um, now I, 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 I okay it because somebody else is responsible for it. And that would be the administrator at the time, or this time. But um, we used to have reports every single month from every department. And once a year, every department would come in to talk to the commissioners. So we knew that budget. We knew what was coming and going. And that was what I was told, so I'm assuming that that's been changed. That's what I'm asking you. I don't know what other, other counties, I know what some counties do, they do do their own budget, but we do no longer do it. Is this a good or bad thing?
Well, I'll address your question first and then I'll, I'll come back to yours. Um, so what should you do about this?
Mm-hmm.
Probably many things. One, you need to look at the makeup of your finance and accounting team. Your county is to the level that you really should not have one person as the administrator and the finance director.
Cute.
County finances become far too complicated. There are too many things going on for one person to be responsible for all of that. It's, it's just too much to put on someone. And at the same time, if you put that all on one person, y- you just open yourself up for issues. Um, because you can't get the same level of segregation of duties um, that, that you really need. So a finance director should be overseeing the finance team. The county administrator should be overseeing the finance director as kind of that second double check of the finance director. Does not have to be way down in the weeds at the county administrator level, but needs to know enough and be aware of what's going on to kind of give everything the, what I call the, the smell test. Like, it, does this, does this seem funny to me or not? Um, and then you really need to back up and look at all those layers of in, internal controls in all of your processes, really. If, if this could happen within vendors, I'm sure there are other places that it could happen within the county. Could be, um, you know, if your receipting process isn't, you collect cash at multiple different departments. They don't all have solid controls in place, and there's a potential it could happen there. If you don't have strong controls in place over payroll, you could have issues in payroll. So really getting down to the granular level and looking at all of those internal control processes where money is flowing in and out of the county uh, would be to your benefit. Does that address your question?
Yes, I, I wanted to say something in that regard. The um, in my previous employment of internal controls, um, we hired a firm other than the normal auditor. In the first year, we had a very detailed review of all of those issues that you talked about. And then on an annual basis, they came through, reviewed the process for receipting and disbursements and. And I think that was uh, wasn't terribly expensive, but there was this other set of eyes that was trained, would come in, review each department. You know, we randomly picked some, we did every department every year, major ones we did every year. And um, I know there's gonna need to be adjustments in the administrative area, and I think the board's well aware of that. But rather than wait until then, perhaps we should have this uh, second party come in and I'd be a CPA firm, you know, but just to take a look, um, in a fresh set of eyes and discuss these very issues and give us some good advices to how those things should happen, but. I guess I just put that out there and uh, we'll be taking a look at that, yes.
I'll address Commissioner Bunting's question regarding the budget. I do not believe that a commission such as yours should be down in the weeds in the budget process. That is, that is not what your responsibility is. What should be in place is a solid budgeting process. So that this process should be led by a finance director and the administrator working together with the departments within the county to develop the budget. Um, some clients I work with hold budget workshops. Um, sometimes there's additional budget um, commission meetings. But really looking at the process is, is where I think your responsibility is and making sure that there's a process in place that you can trust and feel comfortable with. There should be input from the various um, departments. Um, I, you know, it, the departments know what the departments need. And without their input in the budget process, you just don't end up with as solid of a budget. Uh, it can be very unrealistic, uh, you know. I find that when departments are more involved in the budget, um, they learn to work together so that some years, maybe one department really has a need and everybody else needs to kind of pinch things in a little bit. And they're willing to do that because they know the next year, when they are the ones with the need, people in other departments can help them out in the budgeting process as well.
Not important that we know. It was my understanding when I first came years ago that it was important, or that my job was to know the money that came into the county and how it was being spent. And then also the money going out of the county. And, but we had a, we had a, um, we had three meetings a month. We had a um, while working with the, usually the second meeting was where we, we'd have somebody come in and, I mean, we didn't actually sit down and, and do the budget. That's what our administrator would put that together. But we would learn, like, each department would come in, they would tell us what they do and, and how much money is coming in and going out of their, their department. And um, and so it's kind of educated us to, to know exactly how everything was working. And um, and then if we had questions, our administrator usually put that together and we'd ask questions to that department. So you're saying that that's not important? We don't need to be in that at all?
I don't think you need to be as down in the details.
I don't think we were, we weren't so much, what I'm saying is like, a department would come in and they would, each month, like, say the animal control, that's back when you were there, Tom. Every month, we knew how many animals were coming in, how many were going out, and money that was donated and, and what we, you know, what, things that they needed and, and how the money was being spent. It was just kind of an overhaul each month. But one thing too, when I started, we didn't have any money. I mean, the county was laying off, we were cutting and um, I mean, it was bad times. I remember a girl sitting right over there that um, cried and said, please don't lay me off, I need this job. But we had to lay her off, there was no money to pay the payroll. But that has changed throughout the twenty-five years I've been on the board. We're very lucky now that there's money coming in. And so that's where maybe I'm kind of a little old-fashioned. I'm, I get used to a certain way of doing things and I just, or responsibility. I guess it's not that I did anything, it was a responsibility of knowing what was going on. Uh, it's, instead of going, and I, this is another thing, I went to every department when I first started to see exactly what their department looked like, who was on there. And um, or now I know because I've been here a long time, but I don't know, maybe, I, you know, I need to learn new things and I'm willing to do that too.
I think if you focus on the process overall and allowing, i- if, if you have a separate finance director, if you allow them to take on some of that responsibility, that communicating with the departments, and then you as a commission, you're the ten-thousand-foot view. Is what's being presented to us seem reasonable? Do we see high-level red flags within this?
That's something I can't do in two days. That's something I can't do in two days. I mean, I guess I could, but I think usually, you know, this is a lot of information. Is this something that we would look at every quarterly or six months? Or is it a once a year thing? You just open it up and look at it and, and hope that the numbers are right? Or how, I mean, I guess how, you know, it, what is exactly, this is probably not maybe my job to, to say, oh, this has been added wrong, um, and send it back. Or, you know, maybe this is why we're off on, on numbers.
I would say that it's up to the commission and the administrative team to figure out what that schedule looks like for your county. So maybe it's quarterly, maybe it's semi-annually. Um, but that's something that internally you all need to, to decide what you're comfortable doing.
Typically that's on a quarterly basis. I mean, the necessary adjustments, I mean, as they did this evening, we've authorized some payments and those. You should see that report again, that time and where you're at. And I mean, that's how I was accustomed to handling in the past, but, uh, I'm not sure what's going on in recent history here, but, uh, the board needs to be appraised of where they are relative to the budget, uh, at least a quarterly basis, my estimation.
And if somebody has questions, they should be asking them, rather than waiting for the, uh, the quarterly presentation.
Yeah, I mean, if you see something that's, doesn't pass the smoke test, you need to ask. It should not be a problem with a good solid budget, in honesty.
Now, can you tell us when, uh, fictitious invoices were first discovered?
When they happened being entered here or when we actually found them?
When you actually found them.
We discovered that back in January. And so some of the invoices went back as far as, I believe it was July of 2024, is when the first invoice hit.
We expect that.
January 22nd?
Yes.
Just a beat, just a date?
It could be, I obviously don't have my calendar in front of me.
Remember, took a left turn, 24th.
I was picking a hat off a shelf in Bells at the time. I can remember that or forget it.
Moving on.
Okay, all right. Last slide here, um, within your materials, there is something called the governance letter. This is not bound, it's probably like tucked in the financial statements in the back. Um, but I do like to point this out because there is required communication in there. Uh, I put a few bullet points here of what's in there. The financial statements, um, do contain some amount of estimation. So when it, this is going to pertain more to what we call your government wide statements, not necessarily the funds you're used to dealing with on a daily basis. Um, but things like that, net pension liability, the OPEB liability, those are, are subjective numbers, um, based on different assumptions. And those assumptions can change and what actually happens in relation, um, to what was assumed can change. So we'd just like to be clear that there is some amount of estimation in there. And then we also have a list within that document of what we call significant risks. So within the audit planning process, we have to step back and think about where there's potential risks within an organization. So the auditing standards tell us that management override of controls and improper revenue recognition are presumably a risk within just about every entity. So we always have additional procedures for those. In addition, in the previous year, there was a material weakness for audit adjustments, which tells us that we need to be looking at, um, more items in more places to make sure that we're comfortable with the numbers that, that we're, um, opining on. And then the last item in there, there was a management comment. There was one fund, uh, within the county that was in a deficit at the end of the fiscal year by about $124,000. Um, and this related to spending more on, um, attorney cost than what was coming in via some grant funding. Um, I believe you all have already approved a deficit elimination plan, um, and that's all being worked out. Sounds like there is additional funding that, that's forthcoming to help cover, um, that deficit. But it's, it's just another example of if you had a separate finance director, this would be one of the things that they should be looking at. They should be going through all of these smaller funds outside of the general fund and analyzing, are they where, where they should be? Is there a deficit? Are we, um, missing booking receivables? Do we need to reach back out to funders to see if there's more funding available? If there's not more funding available, do we need to, to hold off on further expenditures? Um, so this is something that that separate position could be in charge of and taking a look at. That's it for me.
Any questions for Allie?
Do you have hard copies of the budget with you or the audit report?
Do you have a pile in front of you, maybe? I do have. In addition.
I'm sorry, I see the box and that's why.
Yes, do you, do you want to take that box?
I can't, we may, uh.
Is Allie?
Yes.
Are you, I have one more question. Um, I already asked you one, but under the internal control deficiencies, um, we talked a little bit about, you'd answered a question. This isn't the only audit you do a year, obviously. How, how does this rate, you know, with having to do 30 adjustments that affected 95 accounts and roughly 23 under total general ledger accounts? Is that high? I, I need to, that's high, okay. So we gotta, we gotta get better.
The gold standard, the gold standard is no audit adjustments. Um, I have many, many clients that, that hit that every year. Um, I have quite a few clients that are probably five or less entries a year. And then maybe 10 clients or so that get to this level, probably less than that actually. So this, this is not a usual situation, nor should it be a usual situation.
We need to be setting the bar, striving to be the gold standard.
No, no, what we need to do, I mean.
This, yeah, it's, we can't be having every year. Sorry, but every year you come in, the years I've been here, it's.
You sound like a broken record.
It's embarrassing is what it is. From my seat, it's embarrassing, so. Hopefully we can work on that and get it, uh, we're doing better, since we're already what, six months?
I feel bad all over again. All right. It's bad, but it's not, in the scheme of things, it's, we're doing okay. Or as money goes, the way we're hitting, the way it's, the budgeting pro- process was fairly good. Some were a little out of whack, but, uh, overall, you know, yes, we shouldn't have any of these. We were getting better and then we got worse, right? We were getting better and then we got worse real bad. So if you put a timeline on it, you can figure out why we got worse real bad.
The scariest thing you said was, was like finding a needle in a haystack.
Yeah.
We're not built. Yeah, so.
It's all cheap on the needle or they're, they're group found the lesson.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Now.
Just slide them over against the wall if you would.
But so all right with everybody, I will, uh, make a motion that we suspend, uh, our regular meeting and go into our airport meeting.
Do we have to approve, um, that we accept this?
There's on file?
In the past, you have.
Yeah?
In the past, you have accepted.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, audit.
Moved by Jan, supported by Steve to accept the audit from Yo and Yo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Naye?
I'll reintroduce my motion to suspend the regular board meeting to enter into the airport.
What do you mean?
Second that motion?
I second it.
Hey, George, seconded by Tim to go into the airport meeting.
Okay. Great stuff out here. All right. The agenda that's out there, uh, there's a few items that we wanted to add to the agenda. I think, uh, you made some copies of some different items.
Z four, Brian, you said?
Yeah, so we're going to add three, the security cameras, four, the purchase of the lawnmower, five, the hanger painting, and six, Grafton Farms contract.
Yeah, so let's start, um, we start with the lawnmower purchases, is it first on your list there?
Oh, the security cam.
Oh, security cam, okay. Um, what's, uh, let me just kind of give you a little brief history on that. Um, back when we, uh, uh, put in the new fuel farm, with, uh, part of that project was to look at, uh, security cameras for the airport. And, uh, at that time, uh, Michigan M.D.A.T. wouldn't approve any cameras. They prefer to have that done locally, so. So we've had some, uh, situations at the airport, uh, people coming there at night, some activity happening, uh, on site. Um, and potentially some liability issues that, uh, may surface. Um, we haven't had any pass, but could in the future, so. Um, we did have, uh, a company that the county works with, uh, EPS come out. It was on site, uh, and we went around and looked at, uh, what the needs would be at the, at the airport. Based on that, they came up with, uh, installing, uh, five cameras. Uh, two, uh, within the, um, terminal, inside the terminal. A couple of different angles there. Another one located on the outside of the terminal that looks at the driveway coming into the, uh, airport. And then one over on the corporate, uh, uh, buildings there that shows the parking lot. And then one at the fuel farm, um, on the pole there that could see the ramp and people coming in and going down to the hangars. So, so based on that, uh, bid came back, um, for $17,410, uh, for cameras, um, and a monthly fee of $138.
Did it total for all five cameras or 138 each camera?
No, that's all five. So, and then.
How much was that again?
$17,410 for the five cameras.
Anybody want to approve that? So move that we.
In that same motion though, we, we did have some wifi upgrades, right?
Right, um, they're estimating that to be about $8,000, so.
Doesn't, doesn't help to get the cameras if you can't run.
Well, there'd be some other.
Yeah, there's other things, some other things tied to that, so that was an estimate, uh.
$13,000 goes along with the $17,000?
Yeah, there are two, two different issues, one's for the cameras, then one's for the upgrading of the wifi.
Okay.
And this kind of parallels each other, they got it.
And you got to have both. So are you making a motion?
Yeah, I saw a move that we approved the bid for EPS to install the cameras and update the wifi as presented. There are total for the whole package? Uh, $17,410 was the cameras.
Cameras.
Yes, the, uh, $8,000 was an estimate, internal estimate of. Yeah, the update, uh, uh.
And Matt thought that we, we should.
I have it separated, I have the $17,410 and $138 monthly, and then $8,000 for the wifi.
That's how I want this worded, is $17,410 for the five cameras, $138 a month for the service fee to EPS and then $8,000 or up to $8,000 for the, uh, wifi, wifi approved.
I second that.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to purchase security cameras and also for the one.
Wifi.
Wifi, excuse me. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those naye. Okay, number four, lawnmower.
Lawnmower. Lawnmower, um, the, the bid for, uh, for the lawnmower, these, uh, this is from, um, a local company, Hudson's, uh, John Deere Lawnmower. The Hudson's works with the Parks and Recs Group on rotating lawnmowers and stuff. So, um, we were looking at, uh, a 72-inch, uh, lawnmower with, uh, um, rear discharge on the deck. Um, that would allow us, uh, especially around the airport. You don't, can't blow stuff onto the run, runway, so we always got to throw, throw it back and be very careful. So a real rear discharge lawnmower would, uh, prevent, uh, or help prevent getting stuff on the runways and the ramp. Um, we looked at a couple of different, uh, models, um, through our discounts, uh, government discounts. Uh, the price for that, uh, came in at $15,202.21. So, uh, if we, uh, continue with the, um, two-year program that's existing, um, I think it's roughly $2,600 to trade in, get a different lawnmower. Maybe two years long.
Maybe two years.
You'll get a new lawnmower. Yeah. And so the EEA chapter, which does the mowing and stuff, has agreed to, um, is the county buys a lawnmower to cover $1,300 of that, so share the expense on that. Just a bid for all the other activity that.
This is a, this is a second one, right? You already have one, right? This is a, because I.
No, this is a.
Just get one?
The, the, the EEA chapter has lawnmowers right now, so.
Okay, so this is, we're only getting one.
Right, yeah.
And then the plan is trade, next, next year, get another lawnmower, so that we got two of them and then every other year rotation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I knew we'd talked about getting two at some point.
I would just note the, um, the pricing, the state of Michigan, in my deal, they competitively bid and specify equipment. The pricing is as good or bad.
As you're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, so just.
I'll wish in this room we could buy, so that's. I might have a green and yellow, if I could buy it for that bunch.
Tim, you want to make a motion to buy a lawnmower?
We buy one every two years?
On this program, we could buy one every two years with the trade-in value of 26. We, we would, for a new one, we would only have to pay $2,600.
What do you want me to do, make a motion?
Sure, if you want, I might.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, buy this lawnmower.
Okay, I'll support it.
Can you have a second?
I don't know you.
Moved by Tim, supported by Jan, to buy a new lawnmower from Hudson for $15,202.21. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those naye.
You said someone's gonna give us $1,300?
The EAA chapter is going to give us money towards a trade-in value of the lawnmower. Half the value of it.
To help with.
Yeah.
Transition, so. Okay, um, you want to talk, uh, paint for the hangars?
Paint, yeah, that's, that's next, isn't it?
Yep. What that is, is, uh, we have, uh, a bunch of tea hangars at the airport. Um, there's actually, uh, 18 tea hangars. Uh, nine of them are county owned, uh, and the other nine are privately owned. Um, these hangars, uh, were built in the seventies, um, early seventies. And over the years, they've been painted, roofs have been painted. But, uh, as far as I know, the exteriors haven't been painted. They're very faded and stuff. So as part of the improvements that we've been looking at at the airport, uh, this is one of the high priorities. Most of the newer hangers that are, uh, been built, um, are brown in color. Uh, these happen to be kind of, uh, a white and, um, aqua bluish color. You know, most, in some cases, some of the hangers, the paint has come off completely, so.
A rust.
A rust, yeah, so, uh, we had, uh, Sherman Williams come out and give us the specs on what paint for the roof and for the sides that would be appropriate, send it out for bids. Um, we received, uh, uh, six bids. Um, and they ranged from, uh, the low of forty-three thousand, four seventy-three all the way up to, uh, ninety-nine thousand for the same project. So, and specs were the same for, for all, all people bidding. Um, so based on that, recommend, uh, if we move ahead, uh, that, uh, we award the bid to the low bid, forty-three thousand, four seventy-three, so.
Yeah, local company, this man's painting, the local company?
Yeah, they're local, yeah. He's very, he does a lot of painting, uh, in and around area. But he's mostly noted for doing a lot of paint work at Alma College, downtown Alma, all outdoor stuff. He's very familiar with type of paint that we got to use. He's also familiar with the one main thing that pilots are all worried about, getting paint on their airplane. You don't get any paint on, on the man's airplane, so that is, uh, that was one of the nice things about this fellow here, he's very understanding, and in fact, he's knows a few of the members out at the airport, so they, they're all familiar with his work. They're also, he's also familiar what he has to do to maintain their airplanes.
So legislatively, as he works on a particular building, we'll have to move the airplanes out. Um, we don't want any overspray or any paint that may come down from the roof if there's a blow-by, so.
Some of the p- hangers that will be painted are private-owned.
Right.
So you explained that situation?
Uh, there's, uh, nine private-owned hangers there. Uh, the bids were broken down, uh, private-owned was twenty-two thousand, five thirty-two, and the county-owned ones were twenty thousand, nine forty-one for the low bid. The private ones will be billed back to the individual owners of those hangers, so. Um, so the money will come, come in from, from those private owners. All of them have land leases with the county and the provision in there. Um, land lease says that they have to maintain the hangar. Uh, we've, I've talked to most of all the private owners, uh, about what we're doing, and of course, we didn't have a, uh, accurate bid at that point of, of what it would be, but, uh, we would, we would go back to the owners, so.
I guess the question was, can they, if they're unable to pay?
Mm-hmm.
There was some discussion about giving them some time. And I just wanted to disclose that, that I'm not sure where we're at with that, but we don't, certainly don't have full agreement and, um, based on the pricing and a payment schedule and those types of things. You'd express that many of them would just pay it upfront and it would be a problem, but there may be some others that are.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess I want to be sure the understanding that there's some latitude perhaps there to.
When we will get our, some of our money back from the twenty-two, five thirty-two?
Well, we're gonna get it.
Take some time for some.
Well, I.
Would assume that ninety, ninety, ninety-five percent are gonna pay right then, and there, there may be a couple of them that won't be able to do that all at once, but they're all basically in agreement to get it done. So we, you know, in my opinion, we can work with those few, but the few can't stop the many. In other words, we, we need to get this taken care of because we're trying to sell the airport. We sell the airport to pilots. And the, one of the stipulations that we asked the people, when can you get this done? We have a flying on August twenty-third?
Correct.
Twenty-third, and man said that he could get it done before then.
Yeah, I just want to be certain that, uh, they understood that there may be some.
Well, nobody.
She was probably. I agree. That's the last thing we might.
Let me just, uh, put a boot on their tire if they don't pay.
Yeah, they're on their plane. Anyway, it's, it's a great project and we're, I'm just excited to get it done.
We've been talking about, uh, doing something with, uh, hangers probably since I've been involved at the airport.
I'm not trying to be a material, I just want to be certain everybody's aware of it.
Right, no.
Or being.
Right. I think that'll be kind of a one-off, uh, if, if we, uh, if we do have somebody that, uh, pay all at once, we, we could add, we, we bill them twice a, uh, twice a year for the land lease, we could add the, add that.
Looked at those and they, they have different languages, but some of them had assessments that were possible. But anyway, I just want to get that on the air, so.
Do I hear a motion to approve the painting?
I'll make a motion that we approve the painting for all the hangers at the airport.
Moved by Jan, supported by Tim to approve, Steve, pardon me.
We love the one.
There you go. Uh, enter into a contract with man's painting for forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Moving on to Grafton Farms.
Uh, yes, last month, uh, I wasn't here, um, um, I had sat down with, uh, people that rent, uh, the, uh, land at the airport. Um, uh, there's a couple of different renters that have rented it in the past. Um, and in particular, uh, the airport, the land that is at the airport has a lot of restrictions on what they could grow. And, and, uh, and that being, they can't have crops taller than four feet, and there's a whole bunch of issues around the runways and all that stuff, but, um, last month in your, uh, meeting, um, there was a, um, land lease there for, uh, uh, Graft Farms, and by mistake, it said thirty-five dollars an acre, yes, we renegotiated the lease, it was forty dollars an acre. And, uh, there was, uh, we initially, uh, there was some issue around a longer-term lease, so this would still just be a one-year lease, uh, forty dollars an acre, this is all, uh, grass that they're harvesting in this particular lease, so, um. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it was approved for thirty-five, should have been forty, um, and.
I'll make a motion that we allow that change in that contract. Thirty-five to forty dollars.
Yes, okay.
Moved by George, supported by Jan, to approve the change from thirty-five dollars an acre to forty dollars an acre. And also want to add in there that it's a one-year period rather than five.
Sure, yeah, that's there, it's just a, a number change.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, uh, also in there, I had, uh, uh, just, uh, kind of a little report, uh, just kind of activity report for April, I don't know if you had a chance to look through that, have any questions? Um, also attached there is, is our fuel transaction history, kind of, how many, uh, transactions we had for the month, uh, and then I, I actually, uh, put in an additional sheet here, which really compared, uh, the number of days for each month, uh, starting in twenty-four compared to twenty-five of, now that we have the, um, uh, fuel farm that is self-serve, uh, and s- s- some months we have weather issues, so people can't, aren't flying just because very windy or snowy or whatever the case. But I was looking at transactions for each month, um, and the volume and stuff that, uh, transpires there. So I just included that this month. Um, for the, for the year though, it's, um, what's, uh, interesting on the Jet A side, compared to last year, w- when the fuel farm self-serve went into effect, we've already sold twenty, uh, twenty-seven hundred, uh, gallons of Jet A more than we did last year. And we've already sold seventeen, almost eighteen hundred gallons more than we did in the comparable months, so. And, and, but we also had some, uh, days, no, we had, uh, actually nine better days of weather compared to a year ago, so, um, anyway. So I, I don't know if you have any other questions or anything, uh, regarding, um, the activity there in April.
There was a mention of flying, but what is the date on that, twenty-fourth, August twenty-third?
Yeah, they're all invited, probably do. Come on, see what's going on.
Thank you, Davis.
Right, I'll make a motion then to return to our regular meeting.
Second.
Moved by George, supported by Tim to leave the airport meeting and go back into the regular meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Get through it up here. Oh, medical services agreement.
The, uh, I asked Sheila put together this, uh, brief memo. This was a contract that was laying in my, here in the, uh, administration office on the dust dated, uh, last fall, and it had never been executed by the county, apparently Mr. The, uh, Dr. Moon had signed and unbeknownst to the sheriff, the contract wasn't in his place as well, but, so we, uh, asked legal counsel to review it. They made, uh, some changes, uh, nothing significant, we notified Dr. Moon. As noted, he's been providing the services at the stated rate in the contract, but we wanted to get this in place, and so we would suggest he approve the contract between the sheriff's department and the Central Correctional Healthcare.
So move that we, um, go ahead with the contract language as stated between the Gresham County and the Central Michigan Correctional Healthcare, P L L C. Moved by Steve, supported by Tim, to enter into a contract with Central Michigan Correctional Healthcare. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Motion carried. Okay, best ordinance update.
Evening, everyone, um, I would just like to note that I just got back from four days from Florida, and I'm about to book my flight again with this weather, move back to Florida. Um, so yeah, just wanted to, um, get an update from you guys, so with any ordinance amendment, there are a million and one steps that we have to go through, um, and through at least three different departments and boards. Um, so at the current step that we are at, um, in this process, is it was noted at the, at your guys' public hearing and then at our public information session that you do want to make some changes to the proposed draft ordinance amendment that includes these units. Um, so basically today, I provided a list, um, of the changes that were proposed. You did hear a little bit today during public comment of additional suggested changes. Um, so today, basically, I just need a definitive changes that you want made to this ordinance that I can put into the draft. Um, actually, that spiced well right into the draft, that we can then take back to the planning commission for their review. Um, on this list that I provided for you, all of these were from the public information session as well as your public, um, meeting, um, or the public hearing, um, but some of them are conflicting, and if they are conflicting, I'll make a note of it. So, the title of it at the top is the proposed changes, this is what we're gonna be going through. Um, and then at the very end is when you will just basically vote to approve those recommended changes as a whole, but we're just gonna go through it to see if you guys want it in there, or if you don't. Steve.
Some of this stuff directly involves the drink commissioner, I talked to him again today. No one from planning commission contacted the drink commissioner.
Yeah.
Talked to fire chiefs, nobody talked to any of the fire chiefs. Um, we have things that stipulate one fire department is getting the funds, and we have multiple fire departments that are all involved in this very situation. If you take the six townships that are affected, multiple fire departments are the ones that are gonna be the primary responsibility to respond to those. And then you have the subsidiary ones who sit on our outlying areas, who also are gonna be responsible for coming to these things. So I guess those are some concerns that I have. Um, I thought I was perfectly clear on April first, there were some things that I hoped, because what I've read in my, what, what I think calls our bible of being a commissioner, um, it never one word in anything to do with planning and development says that I have to do all the work on this and write these. Fact that says the best practice is for the county planning commission to prepare sample zoning ordinance language to provide technical assistance to municipalities to adopt such a language. So, you told me your rules say that I'm supposed to, or this board is supposed to come up with all the, and what I'm reading says that's not our job. So I guess we will work through these one by one, um.
Hasn't known Steve on that, so you can thank your predecessors for giving you this task because it's the board of commissioners who adopt the zoning ordinance, it's in our zoning ordinance that lays that you guys have this role. Um, so obviously, any ordinance.
How many years ago was that?
So I don't know when that specific language is input, uh, the initial ordinance was adopted in two thousand and one.
Jan, you're the only one responsible, we can all leave now.
A number of amendments since then, um, when this specific language was input, I could not tell you, but I can tell you it is you guys who made the decision for you to have this there. Um, if you think that there could be a better process, obviously, these things are and can be amended and should be reviewed as the times change, um, but as of right now, this is the current process that you guys have, yeah.
Go ahead.
So yeah, if you do have any specific questions, if you want to add anything to these changes, um, based on information that you've learned since our last meeting.
Yes, wh- where are we starting? Are we starting on page?
It'll be that.
Seventy-two? Or what, do we start now?
We should only have one page, which is, or two pages, which outline the exact sections where these will be put into.
I have nineteen pages.
Please don't have them on our thing, so.
We don't, I have proposed changes from public hearing April first, it says yes, no, and a. That's three pages.
Yeah.
Then there's the written amendments to the Gresham County zoning ordinance.
Yeah, so I sent you a copy at three P.M. last Wednesday. Do they have the three P.M. attachment I gave you, or do they have the one from the very beginning in the morning that I sent you?
There.
Yeah, I can't read that.
It's yes, no. Spent a whole lot of time.
That's the, that's the list that you prepared, we added the not, not applicable.
Yeah.
So I mean, if they just don't want to talk about it, and it's irrelevant to them, then they'll just skip it. And one, nothing will be needed to change.
Yeah, if you find it irrelevant, uh, I can also just read these for you, it's everything that you've heard previously, and today you just have to let me know if you want it in the language or not.
But isn't, isn't it, uh, the issues that we, this, and I'm bringing the drain commission and the fire department on this.
Yeah, it's their responsibility to, to, to talk to them.
They can be, and so what they regulate, that is, that would be included under the second section that I'm gonna bring up. For regulatory agencies, we would include local fa- local enforcement. Um, it was discussed that we include language that they already enforce, but at that point, you're adding language from run, one regulatory agency into ours that we don't regulate, they do. So what you would put in is that we need either approval or agreement from these agencies that they agree with whatever. that they agree with whatever plan is proposed at the time of the ordinance would be my suggestion. You can.
Well, I think it's important that that they are that they do this first because of the fact that they're the ones that's going to be going out there to fight these fires or whatever, whatever problem there are. And I think that they need to be, this needs to be part of this first. We can okay this, but but there's a link missing here. And once everything, once you have everything from the fire department, the drain commission, the police department, then that should come to us then for us to approve.
I guess my question is, do you want their regulatory information in the ordinance? That's what I, that's what I'm getting. I'm just wondering. Because they can, they can review this, but they wouldn't necessarily approve the ordinance. Like, we're not going to have language that they have to enforce in this ordinance.
But we need to be comfortable with the the language. Any other concerns that they see areas that should be addressed. So they want to give them for review.
Why I'm a little confused is there's all these questions, the three pages of questions that that part I have. But then you have the amendments to the Gresham County zoning ordinance. All typed out.
So that was the initial draft.
That had sent me a replacement for yours after you had sent me that at three o'clock, and I'm trying to get into my email.
Okay, so I have no idea what Sheila sent you. Sorry.
Some of them you already answered in. You know, best shall be designed and constructed in accordance with the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Agency eight fifty-five standard. Every fire chief I've talked to, that's the national standard that they came up with for best. Gresham County is not going to outdo the national standard for these things. Some small things that, you know, there's other things that I think we have local control over, but the actual the way that they.
Standards, you don't have control over any standard.
Yeah, we have no control. That's what I'm saying. We we aren't going to control that part. So that's where I was confused because I'm reading on here. Yes, I want to update it to this eight fifty-five standard. But then I'm reading this and it already says that. So why do I need to answer it?
Yeah, sorry.
You're not familiar with what that is. Let's go through your, let's go through your pages of questions.
Okay, no worries. So in terms of these local agencies that you guys are referencing, we don't want them to see that first draft that you guys saw because it doesn't include we're going to refer to them in terms of if they agree or disagree with any of these projects that come in. One of the questions on here or one of the changes that we can suggest that mentions them, and that's what they're going to want to see because then they'll be able to include the language that they might need in order for them to grant that approval. Does that make sense? So they will be included, but that first draft that you guys are provided, as you saw, it wasn't as inclusive, but the second one is what we're hoping will be more inclusive with your guys' changes.
So number one, you got under chapter sixteen, section sixteen seven, stipulates a containment facility within a containment facility. I talked to the drain commissioner about this. The federal standard, if I was to put a fuel tank over five hundred gallons on my personal farm, or you were going to do that at a gas station or any of those things, is you have to be able to accommodate one and a half times the amount. Everything we've learned, everything that I've read about, the standard now is let her burn. Okay, so we're not going to be plowing or we're not going to be flooding this with hundreds of millions of gallons of water at the onset of the fire. My question is, it takes twelve months, thirteen months when you read about these things that have had a fire at them to actually get somebody there to clean them up. They don't clean them up tomorrow. So with that being said, in recent history, we have a rain event every single year that is a large rain event. Three to six inches of rain is not uncommon in Gresham County, Michigan. That's what I was able to find from National Weather Service stuff. I'm sure there's local spots that comes more. There's some spots that get less, but that's kind of an average for us to get an event like that. So a containment has to be able to handle, you know, you're going to have cement. Some of it's going to be stone and soil. Some of it's going to be cement and these, obviously, these battery storage units that are look like storage containers. That rain is going to also fall on the ground. So somebody in their plan needs to be able to come up with whatever size of the containment berm that's going to be, which when you're spreading it over ten, fifteen acres, it's really not as big a berm as you might envision. It's not going to be a wall. It's going to be ten feet. It's going to be maybe eighteen or thirty-six inches of berm all the way around it, which will then contain all of that water. Okay, so I just went with what the federal standard is, and it's one and a half times the amount of water that can fall or be placed on one of these things because everything I've read since, you know, they used to try and fight them with water, and it's a losing battle. So in the new new style of these, you know, the 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 one they tried to fight with water in California this year was a building. I found out it was completely, it's a best storage, but it's like you took this whole building, gutted it all out, filled it full of lithium ion batteries, which is not what we're looking at in Gresham County. It's the new standard is these more look like semi trailers or what have you. So that's where I was like, the drain commissioner should have been involved in this thing because he's the one that has all those standards. So I don't know how to answer that other than yes, it needs a containment system around it, but I'd like to see it be one point five, but I'm no expert. That's not my job.
Could there be a, could you, can you put an amendment in there that says that there will show a container that should hold the maximum rain event for a year, whatever it is, six inches or whatever, and it must contain that area. Now, those numbers will come from the drain commissioner. Yeah, but and your engineers will figure out. You got to tell them that they got to do it.
Exactly. That's my thing is I.
Be built to the satisfaction of the county drain commission.
Yeah, we don't need to know the numbers. We just got to tell them that they got to do it.
All right, your number two is include a requirement of a cement fence around the site for fire containment. I don't see it anywhere else in anything that I've read or researched for any other state, county, federal standard, nothing about a cement enclosure. So I actually marked it as non-applicable myself just because I couldn't find anything that related to a cement fence being encapsulating or surrounding, not encapsulating, that'd be a rough on the whole thing. So I don't allow anybody else. If anybody else went through this, I literally went through this page by her line by line and tried to research each thing individually. Number three, chapter sixteen, section sixteen point seven, three system standard, list all regulatory agencies involved in the proof of approval requirements met. I think that's yes, because that's going to be what's going to include in us are the National Fire One, that's all, or NFPA, but it's going to be our drain commission and all of our fire departments that, I mean, you have GISA listed here, but that's going to be Alma, Ashley, Breckenridge, because if you look at where our six townships are, that encompasses all of our fire departments end up being involved. And then the rest of them are called in for assistance as well. So I think we need to make sure that we are. And then obviously, the rest of these you have listed in here, Hansa, Michigan Construction Code, all that stuff need to be. At least when somebody's submitting you the plan, they need to make sure that they're meeting all the standards for. And some of these, I don't even know what they are.
I will note that with Michigan construction codes, and I'll have to verify with the other codes as well, that so Tony can't give his approval until we receive zoning approval, but you give pre-approval for that. So there may be other regulatory agencies who have that as well, where they can't give approval until zoning approval is granted. We will require pre-approval for those projects.
That's, I just want to make sure that all these players, all the reason we have all these standards in place in this state and in this country is to protect these people who are sitting here that are the residents of our county. I mean, that's why you can't just build a house anymore like they used to. You got to follow certain codes and certain, you know, you have to do it. So I say yes on that one. I don't know how everybody else feels that we need to have that.
Oh, absolutely.
Include an appeals process for the emergency manager regarding the emergency plan. Fred is recovering right now, so I did not spend a great deal of time. In fact, I didn't call him about it this time because I didn't want to bother him.
He's included as one of the regulatory agencies or review, view departments, and that wouldn't be necessary because we, there wouldn't need to be an appeal because he wouldn't approve it until he was satisfied.
So that's where I'm, I said, yes, but I just need him involved in the process so that if he has a safety concern or any other type of legitimate concern, that he is involved in that process. And so I did mark yes, but that if you're covering it under three, because he's going to be part of the process, then that can live with that. Including daytime sound levels. You have sound level. The best shall not emit sound exceeding fifty-five decibels one hour at the nearest hour wall, the nearest dwelling. So I looked through a lot of other ordinances. Fifty-five is kind of a national standard for daytime operation. However, forty-five decibels is very common. You see in a lot of these ordinances at night because forty-five is you and I just having a conversation like this. Fifty-five is when we're talking like this, or you know what I mean? There's a difference in whether somebody is going to be able to
That's what I have listed is include daytime sound level fifty-five and then nighttime sound level forty-five.
So that's kind of the national standard that you see on these things. Forty-five is considered a quiet conversation, a personal conversation of two people having a conversation with each other is considered forty-five. And if our setbacks are proper, you're not going to hear that in a home. Anyhow, so.
With that one, do you want a time constraint or a dawn to dusk constraint?
Well, I think that that's the only logical way because if we start putting times, same thing with the lighting one that comes next. Like, there's, there's, there's no way to, I mean, that, that, that changes daily. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It just, yeah, otherwise you're going to be changing the day. You're going to have a date, six minutes.
Control the fisherman on a lake.
Exactly. So I think you just do a dawn to dusk or dusk to dawn for nighttime. So yes, that needs to be out. Your lighting. There's a concept called dark sky friendly lighting technology. It's in some of our, actually, some of our own townships in this county have that in their ordinance as well. I think that's, it's designed to minimize the amount of light that is escapes into the sky. I think that's a very acceptable. Yeah, I mean, it, when you're there, you can see, but from a distance, you don't see this glowing thing in the sky. But if, let's say, the sheriff has to respond to one of these things, once he's there, he can see what's going on inside that fenced in area, but yeah, the people are not.
If you want.
It doesn't look like the sun shining and you're driving up.
Good example of that by the church God. They have a placenta out there that's lit like fifty thousand candlelight, but there's not a bounce of glare or nothing goes in the air. It's amazing. And the same type of technology they use at prisons. Because you can't shut. There's only the reason I'll back that up. Prisons go the other way. They go straight up in the air. And why they want to do that is they want to blind anybody that wants to fly into a prison here. So there's a lot of light, but that, but that's really a good example that one of it, it's church, church of God. It's really good.
I just, if we're, if these things are going to, we got to have a standard. Our, our ordinance has to be top tier, and these are the technologies that, in my opinion, are top tier and going to cause the least amount of trouble if one of these does get proposed to be placed in Gresham County. So I mean, people say there isn't anything in the plans or in the works, but I know that this gentleman knows that the piece of property that people are already in the works to to place one of these in the township that they live in. So I mean, I hear about this stuff. I don't know. Nobody else hears about it, but I hear about it at these meetings. So fire suppression, I think that our next question, seven, comes into, if you follow the NFPA eight fifty-five, there's a special amount or a special type of fire suppression in these things that some of the concerns you had with escaping gases and that sort of thing, these things use a chemical treatment interior that's it's supposed to stay contained. I'm not naive enough that nothing will ever leak out of them, but the design of it is to squash the oxygen inside these so that it can't continue to burn or get burning out of control. So that's the, that's the standard that they have set, and I know they tweak that probably way more often than we will. And it's because of the, being the national standard. Number eight was include outline of emergency plan requirements. That's, I think, where the E M. Really gets tied into this is with that because he, he has to be able to have a say in what these requirements are. I mean, I'm not the emergency manager. Sheriff's not the emergency manager, but I, we have an emergency manager, and to me, that's what we pay him for is his expertise to have him actually be a part of this process to come up with the best language for our, for that. Include Gresham County Sheriff and Emergency Manager and language is necessarily approved. You put that on there. So number nine, include sections of the hazardous mitigation requirement. This is you know, you put down there your question of what are the requested requirements. This is multi, multifaceted, hazard, hazard identification, risk assessment, mitigation strategy development, implementation of the mitigation, and the planned maintenance. So those are, it's, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'd have to write pages of stuff if I was going to, you know what I mean? So I think for that is we have to have, you know, the plan mediation requirements are, there's several. I mean, you can look them up online. They'll give you all kinds of stuff about what, what a plan hazardous mitigation requirement and plan is. It's very clear. There's all kinds of.
Tie the emergency managers. I mean, you got to have that plan. That's part.
Absolutely. Yeah, and it ties right into the next, which is include sections of after incident plan. You can't have an after incident plan unless you have an incident response plan. So once again, that's where the sheriff, the fire chiefs, the, for that matter, the police chief need, yeah, the everybody, all the players need to be involved in that to come up with the true incident. There's an incident command structure, nationwide one, that all of them have received. Well, Tom, yeah, but he will receive training in that so that he has the different levels so that we can actually build the right. And your fire chiefs and stuff already have all this, and so does our emergency manager. They already have all these levels of the training to, it's to build the incident plan. And then with that will be the after incident plan because it's all part of the incident plan and how you're going to handle after the fact. If something happens, they're going to break it down and look at, you know, they're going to evaluate the incident. They're going to document. There's going to be lessons learned, making improvements. How are we going to train in the future? All of that stuff is part of that after review plan, but that's what those guys have all that training for. And that's why I really feel like they need to be a part of this. So.
By bringing the emergency manager has to approve the plan prior to its construction.
Yes.
Naturally, they're all involved at that point.
Yes.
And part of that is going to be this mitigation plan.
Totally. And then the posts, and then an after review. Yep.
It's a pretty complicated single.
Then number eleven, requiring ten foot electrical fence with signage. Couldn't find anything about electrical fences. Ten foot is a standard for some for the height around. If you drive around and you go to any substation, there's a, there's the, the height of the fence. Most of them are Not, there's, I didn't find anything. I don't even being electrical, but they have a height and then most of them have the. Three strands of like, I don't think it's razor wire like a prison, but it's barbed wire that they have to try and keep. Things and people from crawling into them. The part I do agree with is the warning signs, no trespassing signs, all that stuff. Which is pretty standard and the. Ordinances that I found is that people want them signed well. No trespassing, warning, high electrical, all of that stuff should be very prevalent on all sides. You can see it. And then also the emergency contact information, not only for, you know, obviously call nine one one. But when nine one one gets there, if dispatch for whatever reason doesn't have or can't find those contact. For the company that's actually running the thing. That, that information needs to be on the side of, just like any business or gas station or there's an emergency contact sign. Who do we call when bad stuff's happening? That's what we have to have. So I think those all, that's appropriate.
I would hope some of the dispatch would have, have a regular policy procedure for every, for all that stuff.
I know they do because they generate, the EM generates all that stuff, but Murphy shows up when emergencies are happening and. I just, it's another layer to have that.
No to the electrical factor, but yes to the ten foot with signage.
I couldn't find anything where that's a standard anywhere to have electrical fencing around them. The ten foot, I mean, I think that needs to be really seriously looked at by. All of the experts involved in it, but ten feet seems to be the standard that is used when you drive around and you. Go by gas, electric, you know, I mean, that's seems to be the standard is ten feet. Chapter sixteen, we're going to get into setbacks. When you look at what we have for wind turbines, it's one and a half the fall, correct? So correctly, five to six hundred feet, depending on.
Feet, whichever is greater.
Yeah, it's so. Hundred feet sounds like a lot of distance until something goes kaboom. Okay? And then when you start thinking about Tom's going to be the first one that shows up in his squad car because he happens to be close to it. The fire department's going to show up. What's the average length of a fire engine? Approximately fifty feet? Would you agree forty to fifty feet? Okay. So if you got a hundred feet. The police car is twenty-two feet long. He's sitting at the road and then the fire truck shows up. They only got so much hose that they, that they hang on them things. So they gotta, they gotta be able to get there. Now, I'm not saying they're going to spray a ton of water. But you start losing a hundred feet in a really quick period of time. Okay? And that's if nothing bad happens and it goes boom. Okay, so. When you look at even the new substations that were built in this county. Was it Nelson Road over, you're going to decide the county there, it's. Where they put the substitution, they put in the windows. I can't think of the name of it. It's right along the county line, just, just between Ferris and the county line. It sits way off the road though. It's the substation where they put it up into the, it's got the big transformer where they put it up. It's. Let's just north of Grant. No, it's a half mile road that's in there. Yeah. Anyhow, my point is. I can't remember the name of the road. I can't remember the name of it, but my point is that thing sits way off the road for a week. Okay. Cause those big electric transformers and they do go. And they wanted it, you know, in a safe place. It's not going to blow up right next to the road, cause any issues with that. So with that being said, there's standards for those things as well. I think. That a setback of six hundred feet is a good compromise. It's not a thousand, but it's not a hundred. Not three hundred.
And six hundred is proposed for the non-participating property lines for the front. Do you want that for all of them?
Well, that's, I kind of think you keep things standard. You know what I mean? Instead of. If you start hodgepodgeing it, this, that, and the other thing, and it doesn't, not going to ever come in. Or, you know, get followed right. So the front setback, I think six hundred feet is almost an eighth of a mile. And if you, you can get all your apparatus you need in there. And keep it at a safe distance so that somebody's not having to drive right up to the gate to take a blast and, you know. We all know that these things will be shaped differently. But Murphy's going to show up and the one that's going to cause the damage is going to be the one closest to the gate. Just because that's how bad luck happens for people. So that's how you have to plan for these things, the way I looked at it. So for twelve and thirteen, I figured six hundred feet. You know, six hundred feet from a non-participating property line. If, you know, somebody has two pieces of property. There is no, you don't have to keep it six hundred feet. If I own the next piece of property too, it's, you know what I mean? If you're. If you're signing an agreement that you can put it on this piece of property and I also own the one right next door to it. Obviously, I don't think there's any reason to have a setback for that person's property or since it's the same person's property. But if it's a non-participating property line, then you need to be looking at your setback. Front setback, I think six hundred feet is a, is a compromise from what people were, you know, there was nine hundred and a thousand and. And that were set up, but six hundred is, is a. Is a legitimate amount. No project located on backup parcel. I'm not sure what that question was. Remember?
Men didn't want to see them in his backyard. Was the gist of it. So he didn't want it in the back of the property that's adjacent to him behind his property. Was it? So this was his gist.
I didn't remember that part of it and I didn't watch the whole three hour long meeting.
Non-participating property line done.
What's that?
It'd be a non-participate.
Yeah, that'd be a non-participating property line, I would think. So. And then the front setback was six hundred. The thing that I talked to the drain commissioner also about this, I got to talk to Bernie quite a bit about this stuff was. Include setbacks for your wetlands, shorelands, road, shorelines, roads and ditches. Five hundred feet is the measurement where if you're building a project. Like for say at my house, I have a stream that runs through, I have to have a driveway that drives over. Okay, so. If I'm building anything within five hundred feet of that, I have to have a sediment erosion permit. So you're very familiar with that. That's the standard. So why would we not have the same standard? Or something that we, it's going to be a huge construction project. And it's also going to have potential for some runoff. In with five hundred feet, it gives you opportunity to berm. You know, you could get constructionally heavy equipment in there to create another earth and berm to keep it out of our streams. So we have to have some sort of a. You know, no offense, some of our solar farms are right. Oh, that's the niche. I mean, so that's why I think. Seeing that and seeing the pictures that I've been sent of the sediment running out of them things into the county drain. Now the county taxpayers have to dig out of there. I think we need to make sure we are protecting ourselves for those. So. I personally feel five hundred feet. I don't know how everybody else feels, but that gives you that chance to stop some runoff. And filtration from getting into our streams and water system.
So is that number twelve or number thirteen?
Sixteen is the one about the ditches. Sixteen's your ditch.
Wetlands, shorelines, roads and ditches. Any setbacks in relation to those are not regulated by Gresham County zoning ordinance. Because they're regulated by part ninety-one, which is soil erosion, which is our department, but it's not the same ordinance that it's regulated over. So if you like to add your own additional setbacks, that's what we would enforce under the zoning ordinance.
And I think when we're planning these, when we're coming up with an ordinance. That is to protect the greater good of Gresham County, not only the land itself. Citizens and water for, you know, future generations, everybody else. We have to think about these things and. I'm a farmer. I don't like farming around obstacles either. I worked my tail off just this past weekend to get a last fence row. Cleaned up out of something, but. One person's inconvenience, they have to farm around something for the greater good of the community is. I think well worth that as we, as we look at protecting our natural resources and our people. In this lovely book that I spent some time reading, I have to read this quote to you. A quote from way back in the eighteen hundreds. John Jacob Astor and his Confederates had a set, had set the pattern with fur trade. Take what is there, take all of it, take it as fast as you can and let tomorrow's people handle tomorrow's problems. I do not want to be someone who leaves something that we could have controlled. To a future generation or a generation after that. I think we owe it to our citizens to come up with an ordinance. All of these things, if you look at where solar farms is where they put these things, okay? We've had windmills for fifteen years and you don't see any of these around. These things have been around for a long time. So we know where they're going. Okay? There, so I like the idea because some, this is the second time today, somebody said, why don't we put them in the existing installations? Because there's property inside those, most of those that you could put something else inside there. So I actually like that idea. And then you limit your. Where you've got this problem to the one spot, not adding another one, but that's my own personal thing about that. Seventeen.
Sorry, hold on. So with the setbacks, so these proposed changes only references the non-participating property line and then front setbacks. But in the ordinance that was proposed, it also includes. Community buildings and dwellings on non-participating properties and setbacks specific to those. Do you want to be more restrictive than the six hundred feet, which is the current standard is to be more restrictive in terms of those dwellings and buildings?
Cause you've had that in here somewhere. Okay, it's on six setbacks for occupied community buildings and dwellings. A non-participating properties, the setbacks distance shall be four hundred feet from the nearest point on the outer wall. So if we're at six hundred feet from the property line, we owe it to add some distance. What do you guys feel comfortable with on that? I mean.
So we'll say for most of the setbacks in current districts that we're looking to put these. It's fifty feet from the side or rear or less. It can range from twenty to fifty feet of where these buildings will be in terms of their property lines.
Their property.
Yes, so their thing. Well, it would technically be the same, but say you're building a house. You, from the rear, you'll have fifty feet setback minimum, and then from the sides, it's typically twenty feet setback.
In your size, you're a lot, you're saying, right?
Is where most of the buildings will be if they decide to build closer to their property lines. Not all of them obviously do. Some people build in the middle of their, so I will take note of that is if you do make it. More than a hundred feet, some of the buildings will be within that distance. Because they're just existing already. Does that make sense?
Okay, I, I think I understand. Like if we put six hundred feet between the non-participating. With, what's the amount you want between the wall of the non-participating's resident or home or building, right? To this side of this thing. And I think we, we, we need to put something in there. I don't see most of the, if you look at where these things are going to end up. They don't have very many houses anywhere. Because of what makes sense to where the power line goes through at Grant Road or where the power line goes through along Elger.
That's really the same.
You need to kind of see where they're going. Haven't really done the research on the Bethany one too much yet, but you can envision where these things are going to be placed at. So I think if you add another hundred feet to it, you're not going to affect really, I mean, it, this is a. You're going to add another, I, I would, I, I think another additional hundred feet to that wall from the property line. Is a, is a.
Future development, really. Buy a property in the area and they wanted to build within the current zoning ordinance regulations, they want to be fifty. They wouldn't be a hundred feet from his unit. Because units.
Not going to prove kids too.
We're looking at a hundred feet more from the dwellings, an additional hundred feet.
Additional hundred feet. So it'd be a total of seven hundred. So I mean, that gives you a little over an eighth of a mile of distance to.
Are you talking about number sixteen?
Uh, sixteen is the ditches.
This is just setbacks and home in the proposed draft. It wasn't mentioned in any of the proposed changes, so I wanted to bring it up. Because currently it's four hundred and that's much less than the six hundred, so it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we can't do less than that. So. And I want to make sure it's clear when we write it so that people understand. The, the developers are going to understand if they choose our area. And anyone building a house, I don't want it to infringe on somebody if they do decide. The property owner decides, you know, their grandson or something wants to build a house there. Before you decide which little slice of grandpa's farm you want. Make sure you, you're aware that it's got to be six hundred feet from this non-participating property line. But an additional hundred to this, the wall of the home. I just want it to be clear. Now, I know how frustrating it is when you. Have plans and somebody tells you there's a thing that's not right. Moving on to seventeen, which is starts chapter four, five, six, twelve, limiting zoning districts to industrial and business districts. Some of the other ordinances that I read do talk about where alternative sites looked at. Brownfield in particular. And in that same. Part of their ordinance, they talk about agricultural impact. Obviously, these are all going into agricultural areas. But I think these companies need to at least consider alternate sites. There's places in this county that have already had big industrial facilities that are no longer there. Maybe that's the. We're logical place to put some of these. But that's a. I think we need to at least. Put that seed in their head. Like, did they look at any of these other places? Cause I mean, if you've got a brownfield site in your county. What better thing to, if you're going to, to me, what better area than take. An area of precious farmland and put these things on it when you've already got an area that. For all intent and purposes, isn't going to be the community park. I mean, most of them are, have some level of pollution. On them already. I think you need to look at those at least on a first, you know, first, those need to be looked at. So I have a perfect year from one of these townships. It talks about how they worded that up. Alternative site. If the proposed site of an energy storage facility is undeveloped land. A description of feasible alternative developed locations, including but not limited to vacant industrial property, brownfields. And an explanation of why they were not chosen. I think we, I think we owe that to our citizens. You know, the easy peasy thing is, oh, there's an eighty acre field. We'll put it in the middle of it. You know, that's the easy part. But if we keep doing that. I mean, will I live long enough to see it? I don't know. But someday we're going to, you know, it's the same reason that. As I was reading in this book, I told you, the same reason planning and zoning became a thing was because. Came home from World War Two, started having lots of babies, went with every city. And then somebody about nineteen seventy went, we might want to slow this down a little bit, the urban sprawl. So we started looking at how to design things a little more systematically. So that we weren't just vastly putting things wherever. So I think we need to do that, our due diligence and our generation is the same thing. If we've already got a site. That's a brownfield site or an old industrial site. A lot of them had big setbacks anyhow, because nobody wanted to be living right next to the big forge that was dropping twenty tons. Every thirty seconds. Why don't we look at some of those sites first? Whether any of those fall in those six townships, I have no idea.
Oh, does everyone agree that you're not necessarily going to limit the zoning districts to industrial business, but add language that includes.
They look at them.
Essentially, basically to our office that says that they looked at alternative sites and why those alternative sites don't fit their project.
Right, right now, most of them are in egg.
It's all.
So if they were to put them in an industrial business district, the way they would connect them to easily be. Yes, underground.
Just like they take the power now from all the windwinds to the transformers to put it up in there. It's going to be the same thing.
I hope so.
And then I also think this is an ad, but I think that agricultural impact is a good thing because they all are going in egg. Our whole county is. Our whole county is, we pray for the farmers every month, these, or twice a month, these meetings. This county is ag, ag, and more ag if you. I mean, so I think we owe that to our roots and to our, it isn't gonna. It's our identity. It's on our flag, it's on our everything.
Base we have in Greshik County.
Absolutely. So I think we need to protect that as we look at what was the, what is going to be the agricultural impact of this site. You know, and if a developer decides to overlook us because we care too much about our heritage and about what our biggest tax bases. Oh, well, you know what I mean? That's, I'm, I'm being honest, I mean, that's how we have to look at it. This is what we are. This is who we are. We need to look at this stuff, so. I would like to see some verbiage in there. It's not on your thing, but I think that's where it falls. Is about an agricultural impact also being listed on here. Moving on to chapter sixteen, section sixteen point seven seven, we get to sound, seasonal sound levels need to be addressed in each study. We touched on sound back in question number five, but it should be put in the site plan documenting that the sound study was done and how it is going to affect, because they have ways of figuring out that forty-five decibels, how far is it gonna travel? All those. Like I said, I'm not an expert in this stuff, but I read about how those studies are done to figure out who is it going to impact? Prevailing winds, all of that stuff come into play of where these things can be placed. And if we put that into our site plans and we have it in our ordinance, people are gonna know. We can't just pop one of these wherever we decide we want to plop one. We gotta put some thought into it, so. Because when they talk about they gotta have it right next to this or right next to that, they've got how many hundreds and thousands of miles of cable we got run through this county now? I don't know, you know, over where you guys, it's ever. People are still complaining about their tiles that have been screwed up and they can't get them fixed right, but you know what I mean? It's that stuff. Just like they run things over line, overhead, I mean, you're gonna get, they're gonna have a huge issue if we they're seeing part of this was a one point five billion dollars potentially that might be coming from fiber to come to all of our rural areas. You're gonna have so many farmers that are screaming about because the proposal is to put it all underground. They're gonna have it deep enough underground, you're not gonna be hitting it, so it's gonna cut tile after tile after tile and it's gonna cause some real heartache with some people, so. Mine runs on the poles with Tri County, so hopefully they don't have to come through my place with. Number nineteen requires a new sound study when a new equipment is placed. I think that's important because if you meet these standards now and we, let's face it, if they build one of these things, the technology is gonna change over the twenty, thirty years that it's sitting there. We, they should have to prove that it's staying within those decibel levels, that we are requiring an initial, they have to, I mean, you know, you change something. The cooling system on the outside of one of these things. You put in a new air conditioner unit or, you know, split, mini split, whatever they all they use. You know, you've gotta also take that into account when the new stuff gets put in. Did it, did it stay within the standards that we set original? So that's why I think that that needs to be at least mentioned in there when may, or when replacement equipment, it needs to continue to meet the standard. It can be as simple as that.
It doesn't say replacements.
Okay, it doesn't, okay.
Yeah, that's a good word.
With any new equipment that is placed, I think you need to make sure that if they add more, that they have to continue to meet the threshold of what this ordinance is. And I just think it can be worded relatively simply. It doesn't have to be, you know, another paragraph. I think if you've got it in there in the site plan and in this, I think we, we addressed it. You know, every, every line doesn't need to have a paragraph, so.
Did you add the word replaced for new equipment?
Yeah, I, I think it shouldn't be like new or and or replaced equipment because let's face it, the equipment's gonna break and they're gonna have to replace something. Yeah. So I think that that's a good thing. Yep. That was number nineteen. So yeah, we're moving on to twenty, which says chapter sixteen, section sixteen point seven. Landscaping, increased vegetation barrier requirements. I brought up it the first time. I really do like the, if you go down to the NRCS office and you want to put in a windbreak or something, it's three rows of whatever you're doing. At least three to five, you know, some people get, you know, they really want to put in a long or a large one. But if you put three rows of these things in and if you start looking at landscape sites and you want to try and hide something, it's recommended you go to, if you put in three rows of of something, you can really kind of make it disappear, if you will. Where one, I'm sorry, you drive around any of these things, I mean, you know they're there and you're always gonna be able to see them there. I mean, it just is what it is, where you're really not eating up that much more property because when you stagger them, you're not, it's not like you're going super wide or anything around them, but it, it does change the aesthetics of them so that you're actually, so you can't see them. And as far as what you decide to plant deciduous and I, I think that is a more of a what, what, what is, was the standard for these things? A lot of them are evergreen, but there are some other, you know, flowering deciduous plants that you can put in. Flowering pear, those kind of things that also are decorative but block quite a bit of view, so. I'm really not as concerned about what types of trees we plant, but I think three rows that make it nice for blocking the view of it is, is something that needs to be talked about. Also, the anticipated growth needs to be at least high enough that it blocks the entire best, you know what I mean? So if you got a ten foot tall fence, at maturity of these trees should at least exceed B at or exceed that, you know what I mean? Most of them are gonna go way over that, but I'm just saying. Somebody coming in and putting a ground cover bush and going, oh, I put it in this area.
I suggest arborvitae's because if you put those three rows, you'll never see.
Yeah, a few years, a few years, you won't ever see it. That, that's, you know, I didn't want to specifically say.
It's growing.
I didn't want to say one type, but that would.
A good size one in, 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 in five years are twenty feet tall.
Well, I mean, they already, a lot of that stuff in your ordinance now is they gotta be five feet tall when you put them in, so they're already on.
I mean, they're fast growing. I mean, it's gonna be twenty feet tall.
I, I agree. I think that's the way to go to get your desired effect.
Does everyone agree to the three rows of?
That's, in my view, that's. Do that's, in my view, that's the.
Then moving on to twenty-one, you skip to chapter sixteen, section sixteen point seven thirteen enforcement. Require a maintenance and monitoring schedule and land and units with access log within forty-eight hours. Also, we would need to have, when they're doing the plan, I think you want to have worded in here. Some of the other ordinances are worded in there where they require the MSDS sheets, what's gonna be put in there so that? Because without those, what those contain, what chemicals are gonna be used in the process, all that stuff comes into play with your emergency management stuff. And so that needs to be worded in our ordinance that when they're doing the site plan, trying, and they're trying to meet all these standards, that's one of the things that they need to have. Seems to be a fairly standard thing that the MSDS sheets have to be provided. And accessing the, the work logs within forty-eight hours is not, that's not hard. It shouldn't be hard at all for any company to be able to give you forty-eight hours of of what the logs of maintenance and, and what have you, if you've got an issue. Include language to shut down the site. I'm gonna check really quick, but as of a while ago, I had not heard back from OSHA, but I was, I sent an email. I called OSHA today and I was told to send them an email with my questions, so I did that. And saying this all. Let's see if I got my email back from them where I asked that question. I did not get a response from OSHA, but I sent them an email. I'm better storage. I said, good morning, I'm an elected official, Greshik County Commissioner, Greshik County, Michigan. We are currently working on an ordinance for best units. Planning commission is asked about language to shut down the best site for potential safety hazards and what our recommendations are, looking to see if OSHA has any recommendations or if there's another oversight agency that I should be asking, and I have not heard back from them yet, so. I just, but I did send that this morning at nine o'clock in the morning because I had to wait for them to open and be able to call them on the phone and all that good stuff, but because I wasn't able to find the information I wanted on that because to me, twenty-four hours seems like a long time if something's going wrong and two hours is fairly quick. But, you know, a real emergency, two hours is gonna seem like an eternity. Twenty-four hours is gonna seem like really an eternity. So I wanted to know what the recommendations, because a lot of this stuff, as I've been doing more and more research on it, you're finding there's national standards out there. So I'm almost positive OSHA has something, or they have another regulatory agency that tells us that if you suspect something is going wrong or there's a, there's an hour thing, I guarantee there's a time limit that they have on it. And I don't know what it is and I couldn't find it, so I just figured I'd add.
It's gonna need to meet the OSHA or other regulatory standard that is what it's pointing.
It is my point in all this, I don't know what the number is, but I think we need to be able to meet that regulatory standard, whatever that is.
Whatever the standard.
Whatever that standard is for contacting.
Will be moving.
Yeah, exactly. So I think that's what we need to be able to, for that one, include language on the shutdown is what is the sta, what is the national standard? You know, if that's OSHA or some other acronym that the government has for the regulatory agency of that, I don't know for sure. That's why I asked the question.
So Steve, the question I would have is what is the quickest that could be shut down? Is it seconds? I mean, if they're online and they know there's a problem, I just put the switch, then why really wait two hours?
Well, I, I definitely think that if, I, I don't know, th- these things have to be monitored. I mean, you go to a power station now and there's guys sitting there monitoring, they're, they're checking every little thing, so.
That expert said was there's two sources of remote control. One goes down.
Someone, somewhere is watching a computer that's.
Said they can do it in an instant from remote work. Technics within an hour, but you want to have a specific timeline that they have.
Want to meet the standard. I want us to meet the federal standard. And, and if it's remotely able to be done in seconds when they determine that there's a change in the, the temperature or I, I know they have explosion detection and stuff like that, shut her down, you know what I mean? I just want ours to be at the national standard. I don't want to put something in writing that lessens what Greshik County's gonna have. I want it to meet the federal standard.
If they meet the standard, they meet the standard.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I wanted to know what the standard is. I want us to meet that standard or what regulatory agency has the standard I want to know so we can have it included in our.
It would be, yeah, it would be their industrial standard, so.
Yep.
If you have to go back to the source.
I think you're engineering the electrical engineers and stuff.
That's what I think. I mean, you get in all this planning commit, the, the actual site plan of these things. I think all this stuff is gonna be, and I want to make sure that we have touched it in our ordinance so that they know we're looking and expecting to have.
Emergency shutdown.
Absolutely.
Emergency plant.
Absolutely. And I want to make sure that we have our jobs in hell on our ordinance so that it's the safest it can be. Uh, chapter sixteen, section sixteen point seven fourteen, decommissioning. Uh, decommissioning to be reviewed every three years. And I, I, we talked about three, the others are five. Think about what happened the last five years with COVID nineteen. If we had just approved in twenty nineteen, December of twenty nineteen, a five-year deal for decommissioning of the wind turbines. And in twenty twenty-three, they quit working and met by our ordinance in twenty twenty-four, we had to tear one down. The money that you had allocated in twenty nineteen would never in a million years have covered the cost of decommissioning one of those because do I foresee that happening? No, but nobody foreseen it happening either. Exponentially, prices went up on anything, construction, decommissioning, any of that kind of stuff. So I think to change it to three years, I don't believe is really that, that's not a real reach or ask. The guy came in here and did it the other day, it's, you know, they, they just got them on a system, that's how they're gonna do it. So I, I personally think with the scale of this and what it's gonna cost the taxpayers if we're wrong or something happens, I think three year, a three-year thing is, is. And then that goes right into the twenty twenty, or the twenty-four one decommissioning. If any of you have ever done anything, a project so much as build a doghouse. If you think you're gonna do it for a hundred bucks, you're not gonna do it for a hundred bucks. It costs you a hundred and twenty-five. So that's where the twenty-five percent, I talk to people who work in the construction industry, when they are bidding a job, you know, you're bidding a job today in twenty twenty-five, it's probably not gonna start till twenty twenty-seven. All of these things are built into those already. So for us to ask at a hundred and twenty-five, we're not asking for two hundred percent. We're asking for that insurance policy there. Your highest bid to tear the thing apart and, and put it back to reality or what it was before, farmland. A hundred and twenty-five percent, I guarantee if it ever happens and we have to use it, somebody's gonna be damn glad that it's at a hundred and twenty-five percent. Because a hundred percent, they're not gonna get the job done, they're gonna run out of money. That's just the, the truth on how everything works. I mean, a- anything in your life that you think, I mean, you think you're gonna spend twenty bucks going out to dinner and it's thirty. You know what I mean? It's the same concept with these, construction and decommissioning is gonna be the same way. I mean, you, you deal with it in your office probably every single day because people are getting permits for things and then they don't get finished. Why don't they get finished? Because they ran out of money. And then they gotta wait for more or get new financing or whatever. So I think by giving ourselves that buffer in these companies, no offense, but if, if they're putting away a hundred million and it needs to be a hundred and twenty-five million on these bond things, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, they're not gonna. That, that's not gonna be a deciding factor to make somebody move somewhere else. And, and if it does, oh, well, I guess.
So Steve, do you think waiting and to, to re, to review it every three years? I, I think it should be before that.
Well, I think the process takes so long, like we had, we just dealt with the guy from DTE that was in here last month. There was, because of the, I think, the whole COVID thing, it got missed, we missed their opportunity. Well, we told them about it and then it takes several months, so we can't do it on a yearly basis because you'd never be, they'd just be constantly. Couldn't do it because I think it would eat everybody.
Economics are.
Not work out. So that's where I thought three is a compromise from five. Three is, you know, long enough, it's gonna be done. You got a full year and a half that nobody's gonna be thinking about it and then they'll start the process again about six months.
And so when they review. So they have, this is gonna happen like every three years. But if there was an actative or something, then it would be a little different, right?
Oh, if something happened and they needed to, to do something with it, absolutely. But this is the, like, we just did the one last month with DT, DT, right?
This is normal course of business.
Yeah, this is just a normal course of business for them because they, things have to be decommissioned at some point in time and they are.
We have to keep on, up on those costs and we have to make sure that they're up on the costs because if you don't, then you go back to the, the last one you had, which, and you may be a million dollar short.
Exactly. So that's why I think in this instance, three year is a fair compromise.
I think it's fair economically wise, I think they can do that.
Prior to COVID and the explosion of things happening, I might have felt differently at five, but seeing what happened in the world and I mean, Tom's familiar with how many jail projects, Isabella County's mess they're in, they were building a jail during COVID. Ingham County's was built there, I mean, all those projects doubled, tripled in price, some of them. And so it's like, we, you know, I think one, a hundred and twenty-five percent is being generous to these people because what could possibly happen is, you know, the sky's the limit. I mean, it could go crazy. Okay, that was just question twenty-four. Twenty-five included in fourteen document, decommissioning a fine of a thousand dollars a day on the site not decommissioned by the deadline provided. We have to have some sort of a fine, a lot of them do have a fine. I don't know what's everybody's feeling on those. I mean, is a thousand dollars a day? We were gonna give them a deadline, so they gotta get it done.
On what?
If they, let's say there's a fire at one of these things and they decommissioned or they, they decide we're gonna tear it out here.
Everything?
Yeah. They, we set a timeline in these twelve months, fourteen months, something of that nature. If they don't have it done by then, then these fines kick in, not immediately. It starts af- if they don't meet the deadline.
It's to be two-step. And why I say two-step, this accident happened. They need, they need a few days to come up with a plan of what they're gonna do. And so why give them forty-five days to do that? And after your forty-five days is up, then you got three hundred and sixty-five days to take care of.
So there is a plan for decommissioning? This is just for what if they don't get it done by that deadline?
Yes, then we have to have, but I think the timeline that he just talked about is, is a fair thing. They gotta have time to figure out the hell they're gonna do. And they got a year to fix it, and if they don't get it done, then we need to be fining them.
Exactly, but that, that's fair.
A thousand dollars a day to these people is peanuts.
No, but I think that's.
We have to have something.
Fair to us, right?
Absolutely. We don't want to have like the one in New York that's been sitting there for. Who the hell knows how long, I mean, they didn't have a thing in place to find them, so. It's just sitting, they're not doing anything, which is what I, what I feel we have to have something in place. Because there gotta be a little sting to.
If you don't, then you don't get, right?
So.
It's coming to base.
I, I think that that's a fair thing to go.
I think that's fair.
So Steve, is there a worry in the contract to decommission of when the sand starts running for the timeframe? So you know when the.
Well, I think if we worded in there, just like George just said, we give them forty-five days to come up with a plan and then three sixty-five.
Was it somewhere?
I don't believe it is, but that's what needs to be.
And for decommissioning, we, two instances, so the project shall be just decommissioned if for twelve months, the project has not been in operation. Or if the zoning administrator determines that the project is no longer being maintained in an operational state of good repair. Which would be in cases of like a fire or incident. Um, at which point they have six months from a notice from the zoning administrator. So if it's.
We've got even more.
If six months, if it's due to.
We don't want to give them any more than they got.
No, I think we're.
So what is the way that's written?
Well, there's two instances, so if there's an event or something that happens, or it's just not being maintained properly. Basically, that's a violation of the ordinance and what's written. So the zoning administrator will give them a notice and then it'll be six months from that. Yes, but there's another instance where if the project has not been in operation. They started the project for a total of a twelve-month period, then they have to decommission it after that point. So if there is anything that happens, there's a six-month period that they have to decommission, but if it's just normal standard.
I actually like that better than what I was thinking, because i- if there's incident. The time clock starts clicking sooner and it's a shorter period.
They got six months on the line, so I, I was really trying to.
Yeah, I, so I.
Want to be kind.
I think that's, that's, that's verb that way. Other than I think there, we need to add the fine thing if they don't have it done.
And I will note, you guys can do a thousand for this, or the zoning ordinance has, is at a five thousand, or five, not five thousand, five hundred dollars a day. Um, if there's a violation.
Yeah. Dealing with these, yeah. With these power companies. You're talking about that.
And they put, might put you on the back burner for something.
They could. Unknown sections include stipulation that projects cannot be located on drain tiles. Obviously, part of the concern is contaminations leaking in. I have to agree, I don't believe you should have farm drain tiles running underneath them, because with modern-day farm trenching. They can, they can cut those off, truncate them, so they don't no longer flow to our tributaries and reroute around them. It's.
Hook up a couple mains in your.
Happens all the time for buildings and all kinds of stuff. So it's not, there's nobody digging a hand dig in a trench and laying tile tiles on it anymore. This is gonna be a mech, and this is being mechanized. They're gonna, this'll all have more engineering done than most things to get it so that it flows right and everything. So to me, I think we have to make sure that there's no farm tiles that would run underneath these. I'll be truncated and the flow of the water would be rerouted around. So. Like it's that big. Some of them are this deep and some of them are this deep, so. So I think that, uh, you know, that, that truncating them on both ends and then rerouting around the entire site is.
Set that for the rerouting.
Who currently regulates drainage tiles? I don't think, I know that we don't, we don't do anything specifically in part ninety-one.
Supposed to record them, but I guarantee that probably ninety percent of the tile in this county is not recorded where it's at, so.
You guys record it with the conservation district or?
Well, that's the same, that between the conservation district and the um. Registered deeds, all these things are supposed to get registered, but they don't. So um, this is gonna have to be when they're doing the excavation for this thing. Obviously, if they find drainage tile, and most of your productive land today is gonna be tiled. So I can, I would, I think the verbiage shouldn't say that we need to know for sure whether it is or it isn't. Um, which shouldn't be that difficult to figure out. And that, you know, I, I, a setback away from it, I don't know, how far do you, you go? I, I, I mean, I think it should probably at least be outside of the, where the uh. Yeah, outside of the containment and outside of where we put the uh, the vegetation, the landscaping. So you're gonna get it out there another fifty, sixty, a hundred feet, something of that nature. It's gonna be out away from the edges of the, the facility.
Your site?
Yeah. I think you're, if you, you put it, three rows of trees is we're gonna take approximately fifty feet. So you don't want the roots growing into the, I mean, so if you put a seventy-five foot, you know, contain or uh. It's gotta go at least seventy-five feet away from the outside edge of the, which isn't just twenty-five feet, which is a standard for tile. From the edge of where the uh. Uh, three rows of the landscaping would be. Otherwise, you're gonna be causing problems with roots. Yeah, so that's why you gotta have a setback from that too. So I think that's a legitimate thing to do. Required sites for clay lining. I don't really know how I totally feel about that. When I talked to um, the green commissioner. He brought up, uh, you know, when you build a gas station. When the airport put in there, you don't have to do a, a clay lining for those kind of things. The, the accepted method today is excavate the dirt out. If there's a quarry of contamination, they excavate the dirt out and then replace it. So um. I, I understand that the clay linings and garbage dumps and then farms, all, I get all that stuff. But I don't know whether um. That's necessary in, in this in particular. Because if we're cutting those tiles off, so there's no water flowing off from underneath of them to get into our farm drainage. And we've put a containment burn that's substantial enough to handle the runoff or the amount of a massive rain event. Um, I think we're protecting ourselves. Um, anyhow, it, it, it's totally in the if, happens kind of thing. So we know when you dump millions of gallons of cow shit in a hole, that it's gonna be there. With this thing, um, if these are contained, like all the new standards are and the changes in technology, which. I'm not a believer in the new technol- I'll believe in the new technologies, say fifty years from now, we haven't had an incident with one of them. But you know what I mean? It is, they are striving to try and mitigate these fires and use less, less lithium. Because I think everyone in the world is figuring out that. When you figure out how much water, fuel and everything else that we use to generate one ton of lithium. There is no green energy involved in it. It's probably blacker than burnt coal in reality. But it's just not in our country that we're seeing it. It's in some of these other countries that don't have the American regulations. But when you see satellite imagery of these lithium mines, you go, ooh, that's not good. But anyhow, we're, we're supposedly saving the planet on our side of the earth and they're losing the hell out of it on the other side to make it. So um, that's the problem with this stuff. But I, I truly believe that they are striving to come up with better technologies that are um, lessening the. The risk and the fire hazards of these newer style batteries. I mean, that, but like I said, until I've seen it in the field for a while, I don't know if I totally will understand it, but.
I did a lot of talking.
Yes, you did.
So what I need from you guys today is basically just your approval that um, this is your proposed changes. For that draft ordinance that you want to see. Um, obviously you had that large discussion. I'm not gonna have someone make a motion that outlines everything Steve just said. Um, basically, just a, just a, a motion from you guys that you agree to the proposed changes. Um, and then what I will do is I will take those proposed changes to Spicer, have them write the language for it. And that new draft ordinance will go back to the planning commission. And then that copy will go to you guys as well, you'll get a copy. But then also to any of the regulatory agencies, we'll at least email them, even if they're at a national or state level for any of their input, input.
So that's where we're gonna get the drink mission, the um, the fire chief, all those people involved, is it that next phase then?
Yep. Once they're included in the language, in the ordinance, then they can give us, yeah.
That should uh, happen prior to the planning commission approving it.
Yeah, 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 that's, you're gonna send them the draft. Okay, so.
And they will. Let us, let you guys know if they have any additional recommended, recommendations or changes. Or if something that you guys added jogged their memory and something else that hasn't even been discussed, that could be.
Spicer, give you any kind of a timeline on when this will. Like they would, if you get them this information within the next week, okay?
First draft took them about four or five weeks. And then any changes that we recommended in that four-month period, it happened within two to three weeks. So that we have a team that works on it. I don't know how many other projects are on their plate currently. But like, that's our team who are.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that we'll have ample time if we need to have another one of these discussions and.
I wanted a deadline for that.
So there is no deadline in ordinance amendment adoption, because technically you can make or propose as many changes as you want to an ordinance. Um, recommended. By the end of the fiscal year, just because I know that there are project developers.
It sounds like you got plenty.
Who are like itching to get started and rather they come to us.
All this other stuff should be done by the end of July, I would think, but by the outsides.
Got another thing in the mail, to buy nineteen acres right next to my parents' house. That would be the most, I'd be the most hated son of my dad said, if they'll give you a billion dollars an acre, son, sell the damn thing. Well, I'll move to Southern Island and T. I said, I'm not even gonna call him and tell him a billion dollars.
Does anyone else have any?
No, I would go ahead and make a motion that we uh, have the planning commission accept, can you then make and go forward?
I'll second that.
Moved by George, supported by Jen to. Send this to the planning commission and approve the changes that we made. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, nay.
Yes, have a good.
Thank you. Yandra, I never dreamed I would be putting so many hours into an order. After getting off the track, I'd sit on the kitchen counter, my wife would come up and be like, you need to go to bed. And I'll be.
Our next step, budget calendar.
Uh, yes. It's pretty straightforward. Um. Yeah. We're getting a late start. This is a little more compressed, honestly, than I would like to see it. But I did have opportunity to speak with uh, Mary Ann from um.
Woodhill.
Woodhill Group and shared it with her, we discussed it. And with her assistance and such, uh, we believe this is doable. Uh, it's very important to note August nineteenth, we would like to meet with the board. As noted, we're gonna meet with the departments. Um, certainly all of their concerns and suggestions and things, but as you know, there's limited resources and. But the uh, the second meeting in uh, the first meeting in September, other budgets. Uh, it'd be central dispatch, airport authority, those, some of those types of functions. Um, and then the public hearing and the adoption on the sixteenth. I'd like to have a little more space there between the hearing and the adoption, but hopefully we can make that work. The only alternative would be to hold another meeting of the board, but hey, this is a good start. We'll see where we're at, but.
Do you feel this is doable, Ryan? I mean, I know it's short, no, it's, this is very compressed, but.
Well.
Well, we don't have much.
I, I know, that's.
Be late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did discuss it with Mary Ann. She's got an integral part in all of this, obviously.
And all I would say to Ryan is if he gets, starts to get concerned, we need to get him some more help.
Help we get it.
Get some more.
That's Woodhill groups here and I, I uh, in any event, if we are getting a late start, I just wanted to note that.
We're not here to bury you, we're, we're here to help you, so if you need some more help, let us know.
All righty. And it would be, please uh, uh, accept this or adopt it and I'll be serious, the department has and they'll know what's going on.
Make a motion to adopt. Calendar is presented.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to approve the budget calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Confirm motion to go into the finite.
Move. Now, I'm gonna take my time to go. We gotta go into the meeting, so you wanna support that or you need support?
George, supported by Steve to enter into the, leave the regular meeting and go into the finance meeting.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye. Sorry there, it's a long meeting.
I had to go.
He's nine.
All right, go back.
Uh, hopefully they shouldn't take just. Okay.
Oscar Bellator. I'm glad to see Steve is putting the Bible to use over here. Mission is bottom. How are you guys doing on the reading that?
I'm good, started.
Not just commissioners, but just two.
Hey Tom, thank you for um, going or to help the MMR board.
Yeah, he said not to waste away, it's fair getting pizza or something.
Ready, George?
Go back, yeah. Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll start the. Finance committee meeting and we'll go start out with the uh. Yeah, I've got my paper up here, gas balances. Okay. Look down to April twenty-fifth. We have. Seven million eight hundred eighty-four thousand twenty-four forty-three on hand. Get this paper. General fund. Uh, the COVID recovery is basically zeroed out. And our liquid tax fund, as it reads, is close to seven million dollars. Uh, everything is basically on budget. And uh, there's no more of the recent. And, uh, there's no more that we can do with that. Is there any questions that we can answer for, Anne? If we don't have any questions, we'll move on. To the next thing on the agenda, which is check register. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I do, um. Just a minute here, I had a couple of questions, I did answer one of them. And I went through, but I answered a couple of the questions.
Yeah, this looks different than the report you had, because it has a description of what it was written for. Previously, that one didn't appear.
Oh, this, this is good.
But that, Mary and I, Anne and I discussed it, that was kind of useless without some, to me it was, I don't know what the hell am I looking at? But anyway, to give you an idea of, uh. And hopefully we've had a lot of discussion, some of the descriptions have become a little more direct as well. But this was, uh, a good first stab at it. And I mean, it was in the system, but we're going to share, we, uh.
More detail.
Should have an explanation.
See, you got the almost by the interceptor all over again, talking April. That must, that must have been pretty good, to get the almost fifty. Saw airbags or something?
It, it, no. Pop airbags or something. Try to get a total of all.
When you're looking at a gigantic.
Yes, I think I'll say that, here, I guess I'll say it tonight. Hazard pay. Up for five thousand, twenty-two dollars a fifty size.
Brad has, if you can just.
I did not explain that.
Okay.
I like to say we don't have.
Sandra Harrier.
Me, Terry, that's Terry.
Hazard pay.
Hazard is paid, there, I can say.
That's what's described. Two hundred fifty-eight bucks, was that something you attended or? I don't. Hazard pay and so.
Yep, Sandra Harrier, hazard pay, December twenty-four, January twenty-five, and February, I think it's supposed to say twenty twenty-five. It says twenty, or no one heard.
Yeah. Is there, what's the bank code on it, is it one of one hundred five sixteen?
It doesn't give it.
Doesn't have a bank code.
We, we can look that up.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Uh, she don't work, hazard pay, the only thing I can think of is jail. I don't know what it is.
That's what I'd say that.
Well.
These things that.
I don't find out before you get back with you, so you got anything?
And also on page three, it says North Star Wind Turban.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thirty-four thousand.
Right. That's the tax.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's a big one, three hundred and three thousand dollars.
It's, it's millions. Six million taxes.
Or three C, a C.
When it comes in for.
There's a two hundred and two thousand.
All those large ones, there will be dispersments out of the tax. Library.
That's the Thompson one, you know, you know.
That's what that is.
Yes.
Yeah. There's no checks, so then I'm all going to private banks. I'm, we're going to have a discussion where the departments are submitting this, to please make sure they're accurate and they're.
Well.
You got just a few, uh, spaces, but.
Well.
Now get familiar with the more.
When I run my high scheme register, it gives me the, the bank code, um. And then it gives me the vendor name, the description and the amount. And it's all, I mean, if you guys looked at it, you could tell exactly what it's.
And when, when Chris or Sheila has been, she has her computer there. Now she goes right in there and looks everything up and she can tell us exactly what she's paying for. Without that little instrument, I can't help you right at the moment. But I can, we can ask questions.
All of the really large ones are all twenty twenty-four settlements. To the state of Michigan, Bluegrass, Northfield is the insurance.
That's a big transaction.
When I got thrown at and it was a good cause that I don't know what.
Supposed to be checks that are written, right?
I mean, I don't know.
I don't know.
My check register right out of the accounts payable system, so you guys could run the same register.
Yeah.
Whatever you're looking at.
I don't.
Describe exactly what.
I don't be able to check the first thing in the morning, get on the computer, you'll figure it. Oh, anything else?
We'll have a conversation about what's you're receiving and the clarity of it. I know there's been questions, but I thought this would add a little clarity, but apparently it helped.
It helps.
Just, here's just a little more.
Well, again, I'm not certain sometimes how seriously the people that are putting these through are.
The people that are inputting the information.
Yes.
Because every department does that.
Right, that's what, uh, I was advised, which is okay to a point, but they have to be accurate, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Jen?
Uh, I, I've marked them just a minute here, um. If I can, uh, here's one, Alamo Public Library, here's a bunch for the libraries. Isn't that the money that came in?
That's ten, that's like.
They didn't get it, I was thinking that you had to have your taxes paid by February, but they're just now getting it?
No, this is what, this is what I make them whole with. Anybody that doesn't pay their delinquent or their taxes, excuse me, to the local unit. By a certain date, I make them whole so that they can operate.
I see.
All the townships and the cities disperse it.
Cities, libraries, all of them whole.
This is delinquent tax fund.
And that's, yeah, you want to, want to look at this or have you this, it shows all the property tax, none of the tax.
Um, yeah, but, but let me get it, uh, not today, I'll, I'll come in.
That's the purpose of delinquent tax fund and that large balance there is to make them whole and.
Yeah. That's what Ally, she spoke about that, she was, um, reporting to you exactly. That's the purpose of DTR is to make, to be able to make them whole without having to borrow.
Okay, April revenue and expenditure report. That's just normal course of business. Of the revenues that are coming in and expenditures going out. You don't see, it's, it's normal stuff, I did, I look, cursory looked at it, I didn't see anything.
Uh, looks, I mean, when you look at our fiscal year percentage for the budget, we're right on track.
That's right, yeah, we're on track. Okay, well, thanks, treasure.
Thanks, stand up, say your.
Take a while, get over here. April investment report.
Yep, April investment reports. It's not doing too bad, I know you expected it to drop down a lot lower than what it has. Yeah, yeah. It's hanging, we're hanging in there by our fingernails, but it's not going too bad, actually.
No, it's not bad.
Aren't you usual?
Yeah.
Okay, mhm. So, yeah, it's, you know, it's still in the thirties, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been watching it, it's good.
Yeah. And the number, you know, the number on the side, the investment number, the total, that varies. The most it'll vary is because the road commission is also in here, so they withdraw and they invest funds.
That kind of, that, that kind of takes us all with them, doesn't it?
It can, yes.
Well, tell me, can't do that.
Well, Allison, you tell me different, if I can tell if she.
Tell us they've lost the difference.
It's a quarter of it away.
It's messing with my reporting.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to make you aware that if that number changes.
I didn't realize.
Yeah, if that number changes a lot, that's.
Yeah.
That's usually big numbers, yeah. So, okay, and then we have, then we have the, um, dispersments, anybody have any questions on those? How about the annual bank transfer, or the monthly bank transfers, excuse me? That number went up because you settle, money needs to be transferred, when we settle with drain, commission, money needs to be transferred. So, that number went up, so. So.
I mean, health insurance, court and the drain, they take all your money.
Now, could you do something about?
Have a bank holiday. All right.
Anybody have any questions?
No, that's good.
All right.
Alrighty, thank you. There isn't anything else, well, go back to the regular, I'll make a motion that we return to the regular board meeting for the purpose of paying the bill.
Board. Moved by George, supported by Steve to. Leave the finance meeting to go back into regular meeting for the purpose of paying the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carried. Any additional public comment?
Yeah, if you're going to speak, you got to come up there, sorry, on the mic.
We'll get out there just to get my speaker later.
Lights over here. You got to come all the way up here. Oh, hey. You want to be on TV, don't you?
No.
Well. And don't speak.
No. I'm going to hide behind George.
Okay, so listen, I just have a couple of questions regarding this whole best system. Steve, thank you very much for being so thorough in all of your research and your comment, and you did answer some of my questions that I did have, that I wrote down here. Um, I'm not sure how far you guys have thought about this, I just basically want to give you a brief overview of what I have written down and maybe.
You got three minutes.
Yes, plant some questions and I won't even take three minutes, George, thank you. Okay, so the, I've, I've got some paperwork here that talks about the, um, there's no mention of evacuation procedures or gas, gas emission modeling. And the gas that comes from these battery systems is hydrofluoride. I'm not sure has anybody, does anybody have the answers as to how far that gas can spread? And then, of course, when it comes in combination with water, turns into hydrofluoric acid. Which then.
Any water on it.
But when it rains, though.
Well, but if, if, they would have to, that's really a good event, battery goes out and goes up and it rains at the same time.
Welcome to Ridge, yeah.
You talked about that, was, there, there was an air qual, there are air directional testing or something like that, you're the plume.
It's already, okay, perfect, okay, so let's just bypass that then, I have to go. Okay. Okay, so then my other question is, when we get the people that go out there to take care of these fires. Um, and say that they get burnt from the acid or there's any type of health issues that arises from them. Who's going to cover those medical expenses for those individuals responsible for, um.
Company.
The company will. And that's in the language?
It's all liable.
Well, that's in part of their, um. What the hell is that thing called that they got to put up? The bond, yeah, the Astro bond, Astro bond, that, that's, that's for is anything that were to. Rise, you know.
Okay.
Such as that.
Perfect, okay. And then the other thing I just read was that the, according to the Alissim Energy Lithium Ion Batteries. Come with environmental concerns such as the sodium sulfur, zinc bromine, iron air, lead acid, van diam flow and nickel hydrogen. So my question is, if this is all, like, all these toxins that go into the environment, what, what's wrong with our current energy supply system? That, that's the only thing I had, so. I'm done, I'm less than three minutes.
Comment. Emily who's made the marathon again. If there's no people on the agenda, I would say I would make a motion to adjourn. Three minutes. All right.
I am impressed with what you guys are going over this, and I do understand, and you've done a lot too, Steve, but I do understand that this was all supposed to be given to you by the planning commission. So you can approve it, instead of you guys doing the work for the planning commission. But I'm glad you're doing it, because I don't think it'd be as thorough as it is getting done now. There's still a lot of unanswered stuff.
Clearly, our predecessors in two thousand and one thought it would be a good idea that we had to do all, yeah, when she said that, I was like, I'm reading all this going. But if that's how our commission made the ordinance for the planning commission.
That was Jan that did it.
I mean, that was news to me tonight, because I was, I would ask David, like, what the hell, we get in this position that we're the ones, with all this working research?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Uh, I think it should be duly noted, and next time you, uh, attempt to do something into the.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get you members.
All right, George seconded by Tim to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.